Okay, if we can call this council meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We don't have any groups singing Oh Canada this evening, so you look at yourselves. We are collectively the choir, so if I can ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Thank you very much, everybody. And Counselor Gazola reminds us it's in the absence of any other Canadian teams from this half of the country, I guess it makes it means it's go habs go. So with that, it's been moved by Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock at the minutes of the regular meeting held April 13th and special meetings held April 20th and 23rd as mailed to the mayors and councillors be accepted, all in favor. Opposed, that's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? No? Okay, no communications. We have one presentation, and so I'd like to welcome Jerry Van Udegem and Mark Jackson from Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. My name is Mark Jackson, Chair of the Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro. While board, and with me this evening is Jerry Van Udegem, President and CEO of the corporation. We are pleased again to be here to present the annual report of the 2014 operations. 2014 marks the 14th year of the corporation since its incorporation in 2000. Once again, the staff of Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro have done an outstanding job in delivering reliable service to its customers in a very efficient manner. The controllable costs per customer in Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro are amongst the lowest in the province. We are indeed fortunate to have such a dedicated and talented workforce. Only the only constant in the electricity business these days, as we know, is change. As you know, we represent less than 20% of the bill that our customers receive each month. However, we continue to seek ways to improve service and drive efficiencies in all our operations. With the constant evolution in the industry from talk of consolidation to talk of partial sale of Hydro One, we are becoming ever more focused on developing opportunities for the corporation through operational synergies with our neighboring LDCs in Waterloo and Cambridge. And we are also focused on opportunities in the non-regulated environment to continue to drive potential returns and improve shareholder value. To accomplish this, we have strengthened our strategic planning process and are convening more frequent meetings with our neighbors in Waterloo and Cambridge. So overall, we are pleased with the operations of the corporation in 2014 and continue to look for new ways to improve customer service and communication, manage our risks, and deliver value to you, our shareholders, all within a rapidly changing and highly regulated environment. I purposely resisted into getting into too much detail relating to the operations, as I certainly don't want to steal Jerry's thunder, so I'll leave all the details and specifics to him and all the questions as well. In closing, we would like to thank the city of Kitchener and your for your ongoing support and confidence in the board and management of Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro. So Jerry will now give you a little bit more color around the 2014 operations, after which we'd like to make a little presentation to Mayor Verbenik or to Dan or whoever.
Okay, thank you very much. We always welcome this annual presentation. So with that, over to you, Jerry.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, your worship, Mayor Verbenik, councillor, senior staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to present to you once again the 2014 annual report for Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro. As usual, we'll begin with some statistics for 2014. We added 1,126 new customers during the year, which equates to a growth rate of 1.2%. This is a little bit better than the previous year in 2013, when our growth rate was 1.1%. All total is just over 5% over the last five years. Kilowatt hour consumption decreased slightly in 2014 by 0.63%, and that compares to a decrease of 0.64% for the province. What we have noticed is that the average kilowatt hour consumption per residential customer has been decreasing over the last five years. In fact, it's decreased by 5% since 2010. Peak demand occurred in July last year, barely, just slightly above the January peak, and was a significant decrease from the year before, 57 megawatts. This is a 15% decrease and really reflects the lack of a hot summer that we had last year. So this really demonstrates the impact that temperature can have on our peak demand. But beyond that, I think it's more than that. Conservation is is making an impact in terms of our peak demand, and certainly our business customers have become very astute in managing that peak demand, which manages their electricity bill as well, and we're certainly seeing that. Now on to our financial performance for 2014. Our total revenue for the year was $236.9 million. Over 80% of that, as you can see, is for electric energy services, which is third-party charges that are pass-through costs through our utility that we collect on behalf of others. Distribution services make up 16% of our total revenue, collected and is the amount that's available to Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro to operate its business. The remaining 2% is made up of energy conservation funding that we receive from the Ontario Power Authority, now the IESO, for delivery of CDM programs and other miscellaneous income. As mentioned, distribution revenue was 16% or $38 million, 38.1 in 2014, and that's just under $100,000 less than what we received in distribution revenue from the year before. The decrease was primarily due to regulatory adjustments during the year. As mentioned by our Chair, distribution makes up less than 20% of the total electricity bill for an average residential customer using 800 kilowatt hours per month. So this particular pie chart is for January 1, 2015, and the charges that come to us to run our business are $20.17 of the average bill of $121.67. So in that 17%, in fact, is going down to 16% based on the announcement made last week on the change in the time of use pricing effective May 1. So how do our residential bills compare to that of other local distribution companies? This, again, is as of January 1, 2015. The average residential bill for Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro customers is $121.67, and you can see that that compares very favorably with the average bills for other customers, our side our size and others in our vicinity. In fact, Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro had the ninth lowest average monthly residential bill of 74 distribution companies in the province in January 2015. Now to the expense side, I mentioned the electric energy services as a pass-through, so that $194 million of our total expenses are we collect on behalf of others, and that is the largest expense by far. Our operating expenses or controllable costs were $16.6 million in 2004, and that's up $200,000, or 1.6% from the previous year. Amortization, taxes, interest payments, and energy conservation make up the remaining expenses of $15.5 million. This chart shows our controllable costs for 2014 compared to our budget and the provincial average. So our controllable costs for 2014 were $182.33 per customer, and that was below our budgeted operating expense of $197 and was just slightly more than our controllable expense for 2013. The provincial average for 2013, which is the most recent information available from the Ontario Energy Board, was $325. So you can see that we're significantly below the provincial average, and that really is what allows us to keep our rates very competitive. Again, these are this is another chart that compares our controllable costs per customer per year compared to those same LDCs that you saw in an earlier slide. The Chair mentioned our costs were very, very good for the year. In fact, they were the second lowest of all distribution companies in Ontario. So that results in a net income for us of $10.7 million in 2014, which is an increase of $2.4 million over 2013. There are a couple of reasons for that. The big one is amortization expense for us is significantly lower in 2014 than 2013. In fact, it was actually higher than normal in 2013, and that's why our net income was lower. But our conservation revenue was also up. Our interest expenses on our debt, including the promissory note to the city, were down, and we had some additional admin credits because of billable work. Our capital investments in new plant and equipment amounted to $20.5 million in 2014, and all investments were fully financed through internally generated funds. This is an increase of 1.6% from the previous year. Our service center and transformer station expenditures of $2.4 million were included in that expense, and in terms of overhead and underground system expansion and renewals for a total of $13.3 million. Included in our capital expenditures for 2014 is $5.1 million for LRT relocation work. Now, I would like to finish with a review of our customer service performance indices for 2014. So this is a measure, these are three measures of the reliability of the service we provide, the system reliability. So the top statistic and the bottom statistic are measures of the duration of an interruption, the length of an interruption, one on a system-wide basis and one customer-specific, and then the middle index is for frequency of interruptions. So as you can see, the duration of the outages went down last year compared to 2013. We did see an increase in the frequency of the number of interruptions, and that was primarily due to a couple of major storms in July that were the cause of most of the increase. In 2013, we removed the ice storm numbers from the statistic because it skewed the result so much, so that's why 2014 was probably a more typical year for us. In terms of service quality, there are several service quality indicators we must report to the regulator, in fact, 10 in total. We continue to do exceed the minimum standards set by the Ontario Energy Board. In fact, we're making some improvements except for one, and that's underground cable locates, and that's because we were mandated to join Ontario One Call and saw quite a significant increase in cable locates in 2013. Community initiatives, we continue to do some presentations to for elementary schools on public safety. We sponsorship of a couple of student awards with Conestoga College, and of course, our reforestation grants and our sponsorship of Electric Thursdays at Centre in the Square. Our conservation demand management results, there was a four-year framework, and we, in fact, did meet, in fact, exceeded our energy target. We did not reach our peak demand savings, but hardly anybody did in the province because the programs were pulled before the end of the four-year period. And that really is the end of my report. In summary, I'd like to thank the Board of Directors and all staff for their excellent efforts during the year in 2014. And now I'll call on Mark to make a couple of presentations before we take questions.
I think we'll let the person who's most capable of depositing it in the appropriate place collect it from you. Mr. Chapman.
Well, speaking of community initiatives, I'll start with the reforestation grant. We're pleased to be able to provide another $45,000 to make that program work some more. And the fruits of our efforts this year in terms of the the good financial performance is checked for a little over $3.9 million as a dividend to the city.
Thank you very much, Mark and Jerry, for both the the presentation this evening, your individual updates, both of your and everyone else's hard work, as well as those two general those two generous contributions. Obviously, the dividends go a long way towards assisting us with some of the challenges we face as a municipality, and the additional dollars for our tree budget are certainly welcome welcome revenues. There's a number of people who have questions for you, so go to Counselor Gazola first.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I do want to make a comment, but I do have a question of staff that I'd like when I'm done, if I could ask. I just want to take an opportunity to compliment you people and your staff for your stewardship. It is amazing when we see that due to more conservation, the amount of hydro used has gone down, and yet we were able to complete you were able to complete the year with an increase in net profit to which comes out to the benefit of we, the shareholders, the people in the community, an increase of $2.4 million. And it's the interesting part of it is that we benefit so much from it, and yet our rates, our rates and our costs are among the lowest, if not the lowest, in the province. So you're to be complimented for that.
Thank you very much.
And just a question of staff, I just wanted to ask how we're we look forward to the dividend every year. What what did we budget for the for the dividend?
Mr. Chapman.
Through the Chair, we had estimated a dividend of $3 million in 2015.
So we're so we're $900,000 ahead of where we plan to be, which I hope is going right to our surplus for the year. Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, and thanks, good evening for thanks for your presentation. Couple of questions related to, first of all, I wanted to express pleasure in seeing how since last year's ice storm, how you've really found a better way to inform the public through social media, that you've really stepped up to make sure that the public is made aware of outages and problems and challenges. And I think that that's really admirable, that you've been able to navigate that very quickly so that people can, you know, with cell phones who can subscribe to that can get that information quickly. And I think that's that's very admirable of you to do that. The other with a couple of questions I have, you said your conservation expenses were down. Now, can you help me understand that a little bit more?
Yeah, so on the conservation side, our revenues were higher than the year before because our customers had a higher uptake in conservation programs from 2014 compared to 2013, and our expenses were down. So the difference between our revenues and expenses was greater. And there's also another piece in there, because the current conservation framework was for the period 2011 to 2014, if if we were able to deliver, meet our target and deliver it cost-effectively, i.e. less than 100% of the money is available to us to deliver our conservation target, then there was some incentive money in it for us to to get as a result of that. So we managed to earn some incentive money as a result of meeting our target and delivering it efficiently.
Okay, that's great, thank you. The other question I had was regarding, there were there was a news report, one of the news magazines, I don't know whether whether it was W5 or what, about some challenges around the smart meters. And you did mention about the change of time use and peak demand. So I apologize, I haven't I haven't followed that. I'm a real abider of the time use, you know, I will set my wash machine so that it comes on at night and my dishwasher, et cetera. But the challenges, the challenge was that the smart meters were actually not picking up the there was still the same charge happening to people across any time that they were using it.
Yeah, the the problem we had, and we had a few meters that were caught up in that recall, I guess, if you want to call it, that the Electrical Safety Authority issued about 330 meters, I believe, if I remember. But the issue there was they were recording properly, the these were remote disconnect meters that we installed, and we only had a very few, where we had to go back to the same location several times over the course of a year to disconnect and then reconnect if there was, for example, tenant moves or something like that. It saved us rolling a truck to do that, so we put a smart meter in with a remote disconnect feature, and those were the particular meters that were deemed to be problematic. We never had a problem with a single one of those remote disconnect meters, but some other jurisdictions did. So the regulator in Ontario asked us to remove those meters that were in service by the end of March, and we did so.
Okay, okay.
And we we had a budgeted to do it anyways in 2014 before the regular the order ever came out, because we wanted to be proactive to do it.
So the public can be confident that when they're using they're making use of that off-peak times that they're being recorded.
Absolutely. Yeah, it will make a difference, especially with the new rates now in on May 1, where the spread between the on-peak and off-peak is wider than it was before.
And my last question is about, I wanted the on this summary, you said you ranked ninth overall of the 73 Ontario LDCs for efficiency, and then, I mean, the rates, of course, is very obvious to see. What is what do you mean by overall efficiency?
So the metric that's used by the regulator is we have the second lowest controllable cost, but in terms of efficiency, when they consider both operating expenses and the use of capital, when they merge those two together, they rank the utilities in the province for efficiency, and we ranked ninth out of 73 LDCs when they combine both the use of capital and operating expenses.
Okay, great. I'm glad I'm sure you're glad that we didn't have any big ice storms this winter.
Yes, absolutely.
Took a toll on everybody.
Hopefully, that's what that's the last one, Nancy.
One can hope.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, and I hope you can extend our appreciation and and thanks to the rest of staff at Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro. I think it's easy to see that, you know, with one of the lowest, you know, rates and at the same time, having, you know, lower consumption, you're able to come back with positive net revenue even more than was budgeted. So that's excellent. It goes to show the efficiencies that are being put into place to be able to achieve those results. But again, efficiencies can only be maximized to a certain extent, and after that, you need to look elsewhere as well. And with decreasing consumer consumption, is that going to be a concern going forward? Is this something that, as shareholders, we need to look forward into the future as well?
Well, I think the Chair alluded to it in his remarks. I mean, there's only so much more we can do ourselves in terms of creating further efficiencies. I think we need to look at opportunities to work with our neighbors, you know, where maybe we can share some costs amongst the three of us, for example, to to create even more efficiencies. But I think internally, there's a there's sort of a floor in terms of what you can achieve from efficiencies.
Well, it's good to hear that there's still other avenues for looking at more efficiencies to be able to continue generating the results that you guys have.
We'll keep looking.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you, just following up on that, I think Mark mentioned that KW Hydro is looking at new, non-regulated revenues going forward. Is that something that's still in the fledging stages? Is there anything concrete you can speak to?
Yes, it is. As Jerry said, the probably one of the most efficient LDCs out there in terms of efficiencies and what we can drive that way, we're going to try to expand that synergy base to to our neighbors, hopefully, and pick up some more there. But clearly, when you talk about a business that's promoting conservation and driving revenues down, it's not what I call a growth business. So what we want to do is look at meaningful ways in a non-regulated environment that we can use the strengths that we have, and also just, you know, some of the opportunities in the energy business, whether it's storage or there's a whole range of things that we think have some really good potential. We just want to kind of start to get that other adulter ego of the of the regulated business kind of amped up a little bit, or at least start looking at the opportunities. So I think you're going to start to see that at the KPC level, we're going to start looking at at Kitchener Energy Services a little more and starting to see what opportunities are there. And clearly, we don't want to get into crazy risky businesses, that's not the business we're in, and it's going to have to stand on its own merits. But I think there are real bona fide opportunities out there that that we can help to improve the overall performance and rates of return to the KPC holding company. So we're just embarking on that. You know, some of it's coming from things we've been talking about for a couple of years, but it's really starting to get kind of accelerated because of all the things going on in the industry, just the way things are being turned down by the OEB, and and so we just want to make sure that we're we got our heads up and looking forward.
Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, and I just wanted to add my voice to my fellow councillors that have, it's really is amazing, you come in with a $3.9 million check, which in the future, feel free to bring in one of those big novelty checks, I think that would be appropriate.
Really big one.
Really big. But the yeah, the reality is too, is that your controllable costs are among the lowest, and a lot of people, this tends to get brushed under the rug a lot, but by virtue of being a customer of KW Hydro, your bills for the average customer per year can be as much as $100, $120 less than other people within our own region, which is to be commended. And I just wanted to end by saying, it's everything I've ever heard from constituents in my ward, it's they have nothing, nothing but good things to say about KW Hydro and especially the staff, so keep up, good work.
Thank you very much. Great. Thank you again, gentlemen. Very much appreciate all of the work, and I think, as you can hear, so does everyone else around the horseshoe. Dan, since I know we're on TV, sorry, Mr. Chapman, since I know we're on TV tonight, do you want to just sort of outline what typically happens with Hydro proceeds when they come into the cities for the viewing audience?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Our interest in Hydro is represented in two parts, common shares, on which we earn a dividend, we received that check tonight, and also long-term debt, on which we earn interest, and the amounts are roughly equal. Those amounts all go into a reserve fund, and out of that reserve fund, we make a transfer to the operating budget, which is $1.2 million, and the rest of it is transferred into the capital fund. So this positive variance will represent additional funds in the reserve that council can allocate through the 2016 budget process. So you're very aware of the capital backlog that we have, and ultimately, this variance will go to the benefit of that backlog.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thanks again, gentlemen. Okay, we'll now move into delegations. We have a total of three delegations with respect to item, new business item 9A. Mr. Bradshaw and Ms. Stevens are here actually representing a five or more delegations, and so according to a procedural bylaw, it's permissible for two spokespersons to address council and to each be given a maximum of five minutes. So I will turn to the two of you to do your presentation on behalf of on behalf of the group. So welcome to both of you. So you have a total of 10 minutes, and our clerk will press her bell at the nine-minute mark.
All right, thank you very much. Council, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak before you this evening. Our delegation from the Auditorium neighborhood is here to ask for you to forego the installation of new addition of new additional sidewalks on Simeon Street between Pandora and Weber. We acknowledge that this request is a deviation from the city's current infill sidewalk policy. Of the seven supporting and guiding documents that influence sidewalk infill, the City of Kitchener Development Manual, approved by a prior council, is overly broad and insufficiently nuanced, when it outlines that every street should have sidewalks on both sides. It fails to adequately address the unique identity of neighborhoods, sometimes to the detriment of the very character that many on council have publicly recognized. And as is stated in the city's Heritage Neighborhoods document from 2014, a strong, simple street character can define a neighborhood identity. To be clear, we are pro-walkability and pro-financial efficiency. At a high level, we are broadly supportive of the council's intentions. In fact, it is our understanding that the city itself is currently reviewing this policy, having recognized that it is overbroad and insufficiently nuanced. We have spent many, many hours together with some very attentive and thoughtful city staff, and our ward counselor, Sarah Marsh. After much thought, we are here presenting a united position. Perhaps our work might help inform council's future development of a more nuanced infill sidewalk policy. We think that the consideration of the council should be focused on three critical questions, which must be addressed. Number one, is this change safer for our children and those passing through our neighborhood on their way to Shepherd School and beyond? Number two, which city constituents benefit from this proposed sidewalk? And number three, do the total benefits outweigh the total costs and impacted values, historical, cultural, and community values, as well as financial and environmental costs? We believe that the answers to these three questions are, one, the proposed sidewalk will change children's walk to school in ways that make it less safe for them. Two, there are no constituents anywhere in the city of Kitchener who will benefit from this expenditure. And three, the costs and impacts to real identified values are high, and there are no substantial benefits. This is the structure of our brief presentation to you tonight. Safety. The current configuration of sidewalks leading down Simeon towards Shepherd School actually worked to force children to cross at the corners, funneling the children to the eastern side of the street, causing them to cross in the relative safety of the side streets. The proposed sidewalk allows, even encourages, children to cross on the curve, close to the regional road and greater traffic hazards. The current funneling may have in fact been the design goal of the planners of 1930's Kitchener, in the pedestrian-friendly days when there were fewer cars and more pedestrians. Currently, the children are kept on the safe side of the street, away from the busy curve. The proposal adds risk that the schoolchildren would be enabled to cross mid-block on the curve with greater risk. The second key question, we have been told and read that the goals for the proposed sidewalk are that it materially improves walkability for pedestrians, creating a pedestrian-friendly environment, accessibility for those with disabilities, not only for the people who live in our neighborhood, but the many people who also travel through it, and creates alternatives to car use. Walkability. It is important to note that there is a sidewalk on Simeon currently. It is never necessary to walk on the road in our neighborhood. Indeed, the current configuration has existed for decades, and many of the people here with me tonight have raised their children and grandchildren on this stretch of road. Walking to school, walking to church, walking downtown. Ours is already a highly walkable neighborhood with lots of pedestrian traffic. Where the city's average walkability score is 47, our neighborhood scores 77. People who live on our street, people who are here today, function without cars, people like Margaret. We are not convinced that the new sidewalk significantly changes walkability in our neighborhood. Let me make this concrete visual illustration of a walk through our neighborhood. The number of times you have to cross a street if walking from Frederick to Weber on Simeon, on the existing sidewalk, the answer turns out is seven. On the west side of the street, without the sidewalk, it is one more, or eight. Does the proposed sidewalk dramatically change this dynamic? The answer is no. With the addition of the sidewalk, it still remains eight, as the person travels on the proposed additional sidewalk still needs to cross to the other side to continue along
Accessibility and mobility. It was suggested to one member of our group that accessibility laws demand the installation of the sidewalk. This, however, is untrue. We followed up with Russ Gehan, Vice President of Operations of Excellence Canada, and he stated that the current situation met the requirements for accessibility. Please understand, we believe in the importance of accessible streets. However, there is no way to diverse our neighborhood without crossing streets for anyone, with or without the new sidewalk. Our conclusion is that the installation of the proposed sidewalk has very minimal real positive impact on walkability or accessibility. We think looking concretely, pun intended, at the maps we have shown makes this quite clear. Costs. The proposed sidewalk installation is not without costs. In fact, while it has limited positive impact, as we have just addressed, we contend it has significant negative impacts on other core values and objectives of the community and this council. In particular, the city of Kitchener has driven a vision and policy that clearly are in support of, first of all, sustaining and improving the urban forest, secondly, maintaining and amplifying the heritage dimensions of our heritage neighborhoods, thirdly, respecting the uniqueness of Kitchener's neighborhoods, and lastly, listening to the voices of community members and democracy in building and sustaining the neighborhoods that they love. Simply put, moving ahead with a proposed sidewalk at this time incurs costs against all of these recognized values: safety, the environment, the cultural value, historic integrity, the community value and identity, as well as financial costs. The difficulty of managing the tensions between the sidewalk and the urban forest are well exemplified by city staff's valiant attempt to work with us to come up with a sidewalk that would protect important trees. In the end, we were essentially presented with two choices. The first one, a reasonable path for a sidewalk that would take out 60-year-old magnolias, 85-year-old Norway maples, indeed a significant portion of the inviable tree canopy in our neighborhood. Or, an odd meandering path that skirts around some trees, dodging close to kitchen windows in some places, and veering off at sharp angles that only make rudimentary sense in the long run if none of these trees ever die. As to this has been done before, our understanding from Sarah Marsh is that it has not. We think that this is with good reason. The proposed alternative path is a compromise that does not work for anyone. We think the right option is the third one that requires an act of this council, not to damage, further stress, or put at risk trees that are mature and essential to the character of the neighborhood, or to create an odd sidewalk, but rather to leave it as it has been since 1932. As hard as the city staff is working to manage the tension between opposing policies, they cannot find an approach that resolves them satisfactorily. Our view is that choosing the third option is the right decision, and one that only council can make. City staff's hands are tied by the policy that is too broad. Every street should have sidewalks on both sides? We're asking you act, to act on your legitimate discretionary powers in this case. Heritage dimensions. Many around this table have been outspoken and articulate advocates for preserving and protecting Kitchener's heritage city neighborhoods. Ours is undeniably a neighborhood with heritage character. Indeed, you currently have under review a December 2014 Heritage Landscapes draft. Respecting the uniqueness of our neighborhoods, it's clear to us from all public statements of council that you deeply believe in unique characters. People want to live in this unique neighborhood. Many of us have waited years to live here, and many of us have lived longer than 17 years. We ask, as a staff who from our neighborhood has asked for this sidewalk, no one has asked for a sidewalk, we're unsure that a handful of folks must exist, and every person who is a property owner would be affected, unfortunately. Perhaps more surprising is that there are people in our neighborhood whose properties are not directly affected, who have spent hours with us trying to work the issue through. We have a petition of over 170 people in our area, many of them who do not live on that stretch of Simeon Street, are in favor of supporting us and not wanting a sidewalk installed. These are people who love their neighborhood, love it the way it is, and are convinced that an ill-considered application of a policy that the city considers an overbroad range might damage a place that they love. Our counselor was not alone during the last campaign in calling for a vibrant city where citizens participate in meaningful community engagement. We're hopeful that our level of engagement and commitment is clear to you. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. I thank you to both of you for coming in this evening. We have a few questions for you. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. So thank you for preparing this presentation tonight, and I just want to make sure that you, that everyone understands tonight that this is not the normal process. Normally, a sidewalk would just be put in, as is the policy, as you know, and so when the residents of Simeon started to ask about how can we change this policy, then we created this opportunity to come forward. So I'm going to allow for more discussion before I, I'd like to come back, if I may, with comments and with a potential motion.
Okay, thank you, I'll come back to you. Counselor Fernandez.
Yes, thank you for coming in and for your very well-laid-out presentation. I have driven and I have walked down the street, and I really appreciate the beauty and the peacefulness of that, which is really just a block away from a very busy street at Weber Street. And when I went down, the counselors, Counselor Marsh suggested that I try not to make a left-hand turn onto Simeon from Weber, and so I didn't do that, I came around a different way, which gave me another perspective. So my understanding is, is essentially you would like us not to put the sidewalk in. So my question, you had identified a couple of trees, how many trees do you see being impacted by this proposal?
So I don't know the specific number, there's, sorry?
I don't know the total amount either.
Yeah, there's some red Norway maples, there's a magnolia tree, there's a crabapple tree. The point is that we value all of those, and most of them are very mature trees, so any kind of stress on them, regardless of the method that the city is using to try and do this benignly, will still have a negative impact. Even the sidewalk that's been designed to skirt around the trees and preserve them as much as possible, will still require that significant portions of some of those trees be removed to provide clearance for the sidewalk.
Absolutely, and I noticed that as well. My other question is, when people are walking down your street presently, where there is no sidewalk, or when the children are walking, how often would you say you would see people sort of walking along the edge of the road on the, in this picture, would be on the right-hand side? Or generally, would you say people are walking along the existing sidewalk that are there?
People walk on the existing sidewalk.
Okay.
It's almost exclusively on the sidewalk. There's the guy on Thursday who picks through the garbage, but, you know, other than him...
That's a different situation. And the other, the last question I have is, when, you know, we've had a couple of really cold winters with a lot of snow, when snow is piled on the right-hand side of the street, essentially, it fills in pretty much onto the lawns, and I realize that that's the city right of way. But have you discussed with staff how you would address, how they and our operations staff would address snow coming onto that sidewalk, that proposed sidewalk?
No, our understanding is that it would follow the city's sidewalk snow clearing by law, and the snow would have to be cleared regardless of where the sidewalk is with respect to the curb.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I certainly think that we need to be looking at each area with its own nuances, as you've presented.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both for your presentation, and it seems to be a very common occurrence, that whenever there's a tender coming for a sidewalk being installed in a neighborhood that doesn't already have one, that there seems to be overwhelming opposition by the residents, and they come before council with vocalizing that concern. So you referenced the heritage component of this neighborhood, and also, in just your last comments, you also made mention of the Cultural Heritage Landscape Study that was just done, and approved through committee, and it will be adopted today, where it goes through extensive effort in identifying heritage, cultural, significant landscapes, and you're saying, this is really one of them, and getting rid of the, so can you speak to what, in your own, you know, perspective as residents there, what you think this would have, or if it would have adverse effect to preservation of that significant heritage look?
I don't know how it could not have an adverse effect. We've lived in that neighborhood for over 30 years, many of us, all of us lived there because of the mature trees, the shade, it's safe, the character of the homes, the way they're set back, it's, it's part of the uniqueness of that neighborhood, which is outlined in your book.
Right.
So by taking trees down, or taking three-quarters of them down in order to make the sidewalk go, and possibly losing them down the road, changes the whole nature of what you see.
Okay. And many times, it's, you know, you expect that where a resident is losing a part of their driveway, that they may have some opposition to that change. You have a number of other residents, just to get a better perspective, can I just have a raise of hand of those that are actually living on the other side that already have a sidewalk, but yet still may be in opposition to this? Or most of the residents are?
But you're not...
So how about all the, how about all the neighbors who don't live on the affected stretch?
Sure, yeah.
And still use that block. I'll raise my hand.
Yeah, so...
So it's easy to see that, it's just aren't residents that would be affected by this new sidewalk, it's residents in the entire neighborhood that care for the look and feel of that street, so...
I think of the 170 signatures that we have at this point, 80% of those don't live on the affected street.
Good. So thank you again for coming forward, and I think we really need to take a step back and take a look at our pedestrian charter and the guidelines we have, because this is something just we keep on seeing every time, and we need to revisit our policy. Thank you.
Counselor Janetzky.
Thank you very much for coming in, and I do have a couple of questions, maybe you guys can help me out on this. We have two streets here that are before us that are asked, that our sidewalks are being intended to be built. One is on, of course, Simeon, which you've addressed, and the other one is Samuel Street. You didn't make any reference to Samuel at all, that I'm aware of. Is that another group that's going to make a presentation, or are you also speaking for both streets?
I wasn't aware of the Samuel sidewalk at all, actually.
Because our application here that we have here, that we received an email from staff talks about Samuel Street and Simeon Street reconstruction, there is maps attached to us showing the suggested alignment of the sidewalk along Simeon, and there's also one on Samuel Street, which is just from Fairview to Sterling. And I just didn't know whether there's any concerns on Samuel Street as well?
There might be that we're not speaking to, but I think our concern with Simeon is, because our street is the one that goes closest to Shepherd School, where we have all the traffic, we're concerned about safety.
Could you speak into the mic, I can't quite hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're speaking directly to the Simeon Street one, because it becomes closest to Shepherd School and where we have all the traffic with children. We're concerned about the safety with the number of parents picking up and dropping There's, the safest route is what we refer to as funneling the children on the one side of the sidewalk that leads directly to the school, to the auditorium, to the church, rather than having one where they would walk up Simeon Street to the corner of Weber, have to cross at the regional road, and then walk to the school. And living there all those years, and being an educator, knowing children are going to take the most direct route, they're not going to walk to the corner and cross the street, they're going to run across the road.
Counselor Marsh, you wanted to respond on the Samuel Street piece?
Just, I can provide some context, so just to answer your question, Samuel Street, the section of road that would be impacted by the sidewalk infill, has one house facing Samuel, and we have spoken to the resident, and we've, you know, also looked at the two corner houses, and we think that we have a, you know, the right solution to be able to have a sidewalk go through. We did the walkabout on Simeon, and then we continued on to Samuel, and we talked to all the residents there.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have for the delegation is, at the intersection of Simeon and Weber Street, there's the little triangle island that's there right now, and if you've seen the realignment that's proposed, it'll change that intersection to fine-tune it from a traffic point of view. Do you have any concern on that, or is that all okay?
Yes, we have concern on that as well. The slipway that comes off Weber Street right now, leading right onto Simeon, flows seamless. The slipway that comes off Weber Street right now, leading right on to Simeon, flows seamlessly. We're concerned that when that slipway is closed, the only accessibility to Simeon Street is going to be right at the corner. So, traffic is going to have to come to more of a turn to come down there. We're going to have far more traffic, and already now, when we have parents picking up and dropping off children with cars parked on both sides of the street, we can't turn to get into our driveway, because there's so much traffic, just people coming in there to pick up kids. So, you close that slipway off, that traffic that flows smoothly back onto Simeon Street is, I think is going to be bottlenecked to come just around the corner.
So, you're telling me, then, that this design that's suggested will worsen the situation?
We're concerned that it's going to cause more traffic in front of our street, yes.
Okay.
Where children, again, are crossing.
Okay, I appreciate that. I happen to have the opportunity back a couple of weeks, a week ago, to visit your properties, and I talked to some of the neighbors there, and walked up and down the street, et cetera, and I saw the trees that were of concern, how the sidewalk would zigzagging, close to the curb, back to the property lines, et cetera. So, I really do see your, you see your issues. But the interesting thing I noticed was that there was no traffic. I was there for about 45 minutes, and didn't see one car go by, or anybody walking on the sidewalk. So, I think your comments that people do walk on the other side, I did see people there, walking their dog, whatever, but, so it's a pretty quiet street and a very lovely heritage atmosphere in there.
I guess it depends what time of day you're there, whether or not you see a lot of people.
I was there Sunday afternoon, 5:00.
Okay. Two days.
Thank you.
But you're right, as we said to councillor Fernandez, people don't walk down the road, they walk on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Councillor Gazzola?
Thank you. I want to compliment you on your presentation. Your interactive presentation is excellent. When I'm looking at this picture, on the right-hand side, there are no sidewalks. Is that right? Yeah, okay. So, the, Mr. Bradshaw, when you were talking, you talked about walkability of a count of 47 to 77. Can you expand on that?
So, there's a website called WalkScore, and if you look at WalkScore, it says that the city of Kitchener has an average walk score of 47, and if you look at our neighborhood, it says it has a walk score of 77.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. So, you're, there is obvious a lot of, a lot of walkability in the neighborhood.
So, they also mention in there that walkability doesn't necessarily speak to the nature of the walk, the setting for the walk, the environment. It talks about closeness to specific resources, schools, churches, food. So, we, we think that is a relevant statistic, but it also doesn't speak to the fact that the trees are a big part of the culture and the nature of people walking through our neighborhood.
Yeah, just to let you know, I tried that test once where I live, and I think I had 10 or 12. The other thing I do want to mention is that I've lived in this community for 52 years. You talk about the impact on our community. I've driven down your street on several occasions. I have probably walked down it once or twice, but I just, I know it as a real quiet, quiet street. And I know, I see it like this. I've not seen it when children are going to school in the morning, but from what I gather, they have learned to walk where they should probably be walking from. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor?
I would have some comments when that time comes to.
That's fine. Councillor Schneider?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Verbanovic. Thank you for this well-done and very informative presentation. I'm a guy that went to Shepherd School as a kid, so I'm very familiar with your neighborhood. I did trick-or-treating in there, because there was a gold mine when I was a kid. Could you speak, maybe councillor Yanecki touched on it, but the traffic volume, does it ebb and flow? If you were to say, in, out of a scale of 1 to 10, on average, what would it, what would it be?
Depends on the time.
It depends. On a Friday night, with a Rangers game happening, there's a lot of traffic. Generally, throughout the week, traffic is fairly subdued. It's a fairly quiet neighborhood in that respect.
So, during the day, maybe on the weekend, where kids are playing, is there an issue with them crossing the road to the sidewalk side of the street?
Absolutely not. One of the statistics we heard is that an average neighborhood turns over every 17 years. The majority of the people who are here tonight and live on that stretch of road have been in the neighborhood more than 17 years. So, they've raised their children there, they're starting to raise their grandchildren there, and there's never been an issue with crossing the road. The traffic is fairly subdued and quiet, and, yeah, we're happy with our kids crossing the road there.
Mm-hmm. This is one of the things that we've been discussing, whether it's with heritage or with infill, is the streetscape. And I do share your concerns of the value of that streetscape and how it contributes to the heritage value of the neighborhood. So, thank you for, again, for this demonstration, this great presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions. I, too, just wanted to express my thanks. I had the opportunity, I guess, a week ago Saturday, to walk the area with councillor Marsh and one of the residents, and have the opportunity to see the area firsthand and understand some of, some of the issues, and appreciate the time that all of you took to present this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There's one other delegation on this issue, and that's Mike Bowes. Welcome, Mr. Bowes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Barry Verbanovic, and members of council. My name is Mike Bowes. I happen to live around the corner from these two streets. But before I get started, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the city on its Walk Friendly Community Award that I believe was given last month at the Smart Growth Network meeting. You know, this was given in part for recognition of the plans that the city has put in place for sidewalk infill, and I think now the eyes of the rest of the province are on us to make sure that we do a good job of implementing those plans. And secondly, I'd like to thank the last delegation for highlighting the importance of trees. Trees, mature trees, a tree canopy and shade are very important factors in walkability of neighborhoods. And I think, you know, too often, we find that sidewalks and trees are pitted against each other as, when sidewalk projects are considered. And also, I find, what I would really like to say tonight is that too often, council finds itself in this position. We've set a policy in place that, and goals, that desire to build sidewalks, but then each time it comes up, the neighborhood says, "We're special." It doesn't work here. And the risk we face with that is if we, if we don't have a good, consistent process for working through what those challenges are, how to address those concerns of the neighborhood, and, sorry, how, and the broader public needs of safe, consistent, walkable spaces, then we won't see our sidewalk infill plans and our walkability goals fulfilled. And so, I understand that the city is, or city staff are currently drafting a policy that would put in place sort of a process and hierarchy of how we would prioritize sidewalk infill, and I would, I would really encourage that process and for council to make sure that it's given the teeth it needs to ensure good sidewalk walkability, and also listen to what the concerns are, and make sure that we're not doing things like putting, pitting trees against people walking, but that we can, you know, maybe make better choices. In this particular case, you know, I happen to live in the area, I happen to walk a fair amount in the area, and I find some of these sidewalk gaps inconvenient. And, you know, certainly, I haven't been living as long as many of my neighbors, and so, you know, they feel comfortable and safe. I often find myself, at least on Samuel, where it's just the one block, walking on the street there, often not going against traffic, but walking with traffic, because that happens to be the side of the street I'm on and the way I'm going. So, I think there are people who, you know, human nature being what it is, people will walk in the straightest line that they can. And so, I would, for this case, you know, personally, I would see sidewalks benefiting me. I would not want to see it come at the expense of trees. If anything, you know, we have built the road wider than it needs to be to carry traffic in both directions. Maybe we can take some of the on-street parking space that we have along that roadway. But ultimately, I would encourage council to develop a consistent policy in deciding these matters, so that we're not, we're not having debates that pit neighbors against neighbors, but that we're, we're coming up with consistent decisions that benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowes. There's one question for you at this point. Councillor Marsh?
Thank you. Maybe, maybe I could ask the clerk to raise the podium for Mr. Bowes?
Oh.
I'd hate to, I don't want, like to see you crouching over. You can, you know, own your height. I wish I could have more height. So, I want to just ask you, Mike, thank you for coming in. So, my understanding is that you do live close by Simeon Street, and when you're walking with your family, have you ever felt unsafe in walking along the road, roadway stretch, or crossing the road near Weber?
Well, generally, the only place where we've walked along the road instead of the sidewalk will typically switch over on Simeon to the far side. But it, actually, Simeon and Samuel aren't the only two streets where we have to do that. Sterling is in a similar boat. The sidewalk ends, or only runs from, on the one side, from Weber to Samuel, and that forces us to change over there, which is, which is kind of unfortunate, because if we wanted our son in two years to take a safer route to school, he would actually have to cross the road without a crosswalk there, or cross on Weber, or cross through the slipway on Weber to get to Shepherd School. And so, having consistent sidewalks that, that we know reduce, minimize the number of conflict points are important to us. I realize Sterling isn't up for discussion tonight, but, sorry, I'm being long-winded, but in short, Samuel hasn't felt too bad, because it's only one block, and we haven't tried it elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. I'll have questions of staff when the time comes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bowes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take questions of staff now. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Allen? So, being a new councillor here, you know, I, I'm trying to, you know, grapple with this position that we're put in with, you know, understanding how this might work. And so, I'm wondering if, now, my understanding is that the tender is out. It's out for tender right now, and it has not closed yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so, if we were to delay the decision about sidewalk, would there be an opportunity to remove from the contract infill on the one side later on, even after the tender closes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The contract is structured in such a way that deletion of the sidewalk at any time before it's built would not present too many problems for the administrators of the contract.
And, and that, just to clarify, then, the cost that is incorporated into the project costs of installing the sidewalk, that would then not be included in the award, is that correct?
That's correct. It's a unit price contract, so the contractor would get paid for every meter, square meter of sidewalk that's installed. So, if we removed some sidewalk from the contract, it just, we would not pay the contractor for that.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Redman a question as well? Thank you, Mr. Redman, for being here. I want to ask you, you know, one of the issues here on this street that really, that I struggle with is the safety of the children walking to school, and, and so, but my understanding is that we, we don't normally increase walkability, walkable safety by decreasing the number of sidewalks. And so, if, if this location were to have no sidewalk put on, or if, even if it did have a sidewalk, I'm wondering, though, would we be able to address the safety concerns of Simeon as it relates to Weber traffic entering Simeon with, separately from the sidewalk issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Could I get the question repeated? I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, the concern is that children walking to school at Shepherd Avenue will be unsafely crossing and putting themselves into harm's way when the cars coming off of Weber will be entering Simeon Street. And if anybody here has, and many of us in the room have done this, have turned on to Simeon from Weber during busy traffic time, we know that everybody's rushing off of Weber onto Simeon and not considering, not thinking about potential pedestrians walking midway through the, through the street. So, I'm wondering, will we be able to mitigate traffic calming concerns through other means?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The closure of the slip lane should reduce traffic speeds on Simeon Street, because traffics are, traffic, traffic turning on to Simeon would have to turn at more of an acute angle. So, oftentimes, slip lanes do cause potential conflicts with pedestrians, because traffic is traveling at a higher speed, doesn't have to slow down when making those turns. Depending on where children are being let off for school, if they're being let off on the non-sidewalk side, they're likely being forced to cross mid-block or walk along the roadway for a portion. So, from a vulnerable user perspective, sidewalks on both sides of the street do tend to improve safety for all users.
Okay, thank you. So, I don't know if there are other questions for staff?
There are many other questions.
Okay, I'll click back in when it's comment time. And also, I have a motion, a proposed motion at the time.
Okay. You know what? Actually, I'm going to ask you to put that motion on the table, so that as people are asking questions of staff, they can also comment on that motion.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. All right, so, here, I'm going to pass this to the clerk. This topic has been extremely challenging for me to come to terms with, because on the one hand, my role, being an elected official, is to represent the residents in my ward, and clearly, the overwhelming majority of the people on Simeon Street and surrounding areas would like to have no sidewalk installed when their road is reconstructed. And I sincerely applaud their efforts, I admire their tenacity, and I, I, I love the streets that we're talking about here. Clearly, these residents love their neighborhood, and they value it as walkable. Now, sidewalk infill has been a contentious issue in many areas of the city, and up to now, council has made some exceptions to the rule here or there, and it has been inconsistent. And so, I find this quite problematic in making my decision about the sidewalk on Simeon. We need to clarify our position and stick with it, in my view. So, whether it's in May or June, this spring, council will see before us an updated sidewalk infill policy, and we will discuss it, and we will decide on the, how we might be able to make it more nuanced. And so, I feel that it would be irresponsible to force the issue tonight. I would like to offer up, recognizing that council will discuss and approve a sidewalk infill policy within the next two months, by June 30th, that council delay consideration about installing sidewalk on both sides of Simeon Street until after a sidewalk infill policy is approved. And based on Mr. Allen's answers, that will not affect the tendering process. We could still award the tender as is, and then remove the sidewalk portion... We could still award the tender as is and then remove the sidewalk portion at the time that is appropriate. If we were here tonight without a sidewalk policy in the horizon, I would have to vote for the sidewalk, because I would feel that as much as I support the residents in their passion for this topic, I feel that walkability in the community is very important. However, I do like the idea of seeing our sidewalk policy a bit more nuanced and include consideration of things like heritage and certainly trees. If we decide as a council in May or June that citizens should have more input on each case, then I feel it's absolutely unfair for the residents of Simeon to have to go with the sidewalk at this point. So, please consider, I would encourage council to consider supporting my motion.
Okay. I will later on, after we hear the other questions. Actually, I'll just take, is there a second for this right now? Second by Counsel Schneider? Okay. So, we'll hold the motion, and we'll just continue along with questions and comments. And I've got six people in the queue right now. Counsel Fernandez?
Thank you. This question is to Mr. Redman, I guess, more than anybody. Isn't the reason that children can cross safely at Sterling and Simeon or remain on the same side as they would going to Shepherd School a good reason not to add another crossing point for the kids if there was a sidewalk on the left side? If you're looking at the map that I have in my hands in my package right now.
Through the chair. That's assuming that the only pedestrians in the neighborhood are traveling to the school, not to other destinations in the neighborhood, so...
But is there not a stoplight just slightly past Shepherd School where residents can cross Weber safely? Is that not Borden?
Through the chair, there is a stoplight there. I was thinking about traveling the other direction up Simeon, onto Sterling, and into other destinations in the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. I was commenting on traveling up Simeon towards Sterling to other destinations in the neighborhood, so there's other places in the neighborhood that people are walking. The other component is if people are dropping off their children for school, if they're using both sides of Simeon Street, there is no sidewalk on the one side, so people are getting out onto people's lawns or into snowbanks, and then having to cross the street mid-block or go back to another point and cross the street.
Have you had a number of complaints from the people living on Simeon in that portion between Sterling and Weber, that there are kids getting out of cars and stumbling in snowbanks during the winter or trespassing on property during the beginning of school and ending of school?
Through the mayor, I haven't been involved, as involved in this project, so Barry Cronkite in our office has been involved with Steve, so I'm not sure if they've received complaints around that. But we do get that complaint from other areas in the city where there's only sidewalk on one side of the street. People are often asking for sidewalks or no parking on that side of the street to limit people getting out of their car and having to cross the street.
I understand. I don't want to interrupt, you know, I always have a limited time, so... But I'm speaking specifically about this particular situation, and if we're talking about looking at the nuances of neighborhoods, then that's why I would like to understand if it's possible for you to give council that information about the number of complaints that have occurred from residents living on the piece of Simeon between Sterling and Weber, complaining about, you know, it's unsafe for kids to be getting out, or that's what I'd like to understand. My other question was related to the change in the little, I think what I would call a refuge island, this little triangle there. My understanding from the drawings that we received from Mr. Allen, that that's going to be removed completely. If there's no sidewalk put in on the opposite side of Simeon, will that design remain?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, you're talking about the slip lane where Weber comes into...
Yes. But there's like a pedestrian, I would call it a pedestrian island, but maybe you don't call it that, but...
Yeah, that will disappear, because the slip lane is disappearing.
Okay.
So, the road will essentially, Simeon will tee into Weber in its original configuration.
Okay. I'm just looking at that map, so that will be a T. So, then, will we be not creating a challenging problem for somebody to make a left-hand turn from Simeon onto Weber? Without that refuge spot?
The slip lane right now is one way coming in from Weber. So, if you're going to make a left turn onto Weber from Simeon coming out, the only way to do that is a left turn onto Weber, as you described. So, we're not changing that situation at all.
Yeah, changing that at all. Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Counsel Schneider?
Thank you. I just wondered if you could maybe take me back here for a bit of a history lesson, but what would the original reasoning be when the neighborhood was created for only having a sidewalk on one side of the street?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This street is about 80 years old, I think. I don't know why a sidewalk was not installed in the first place. It would have been what we call greenfield construction, so it would have been very simple to install a sidewalk, but for whatever reason, it was not installed.
Okay. Have there been any safety issues raised by Shepherd School or the school board requesting a sidewalk like this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are not aware right now of any concerns raised by the school directly, no.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Yonetski? Whoops, sorry, didn't click in. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. To Mr. Allen, you're talking about the tenders, and if the tenders are proceeded, notwithstanding the sidewalk policy, if we defer it this evening, you still feel comfortable in proceeding with the tenders and bringing it back to council sometime in June, yourself?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely. Like I said, the tender is a unit-priced contract, so we can remove quantity of material. So, in this case, if the sidewalk was not approved, we would just remove that section of sidewalk and pay the contractor for less sidewalk.
Okay. The other question I have, then, is if the tender is awarded, is it to cover both streets, Samuel and Simeon, or would there be two different contractors and two different tenders?
The contract will include reconstruction of both streets, Samuel and Simeon.
Okay. So, it could be possible this evening that you could have a sidewalk approved on one street and then not on another, depending on how council votes on it. And so, that split doesn't concern you at all, then? Because you can still follow through with your removal of the sidewalk of the administrative part?
That's correct. I'll just qualify that with, as long as the removal is a straight removal. If staff are directed to realign the road or narrow the road, look at any other options like that, that would require a redesign. But at this point, if it's just a simple deletion of the sidewalk from the contract, that is possible.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Eddington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions for Steve, Mr. Allen. How many mature trees are we dealing with here? Someone must have an idea of how many trees.
So, on Simeon, through you, Mr. Mayor, there are approximately four very large mature trees that the sidewalk is going to be navigating, I'll say. There are about two tree removals. These are very small trees. One is actually smaller than the type of tree that we would put back in, in its place. The other is a medium-sized crabapple tree. So, those are the only tree removals at this point. There is a tree that we will, what we call spade, meaning it'll just be picked up and placed in a new location behind the new sidewalk. That's Simeon. On Samuel Street, there are a couple trees that we've realigned the sidewalk to minimize the impacts, too. And we believe that it's in a location that will be okay for those trees. I would like to add that for any mature tree, whenever you're installing sidewalk within the drip line of a tree, there is a chance that you will harm the tree significantly. Now, we have the sidewalk in a location where we think we've minimized the impact of the trees, but you just never know until you start working in that area.
That was my second question. So, you've answered that one. When you handle, or when your staff handle these volatile sidewalk issues, do you, as a staff person, see differences and nuances between each situation on each street, each neighborhood? Or do you just approach it in exactly the same way?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Every infill is different, and I'll point to an example on Sterling, which was mentioned by one of the delegations. Sterling was reconstructed last year. At the time it was reconstructed, there was a plan or an objective to try and meet the policy and install sidewalk on Sterling. Sterling is a different type of roadway than Simeon. It is narrower. It's 15 meters wide, whereas Simeon is 20 meters wide. When the project team looked at installation of sidewalk on Sterling, we noted that there was less space than on Simeon. We don't have enough space behind the row of mature trees that are on Sterling to install a sidewalk. In that case, we probably would have significantly damaged all the trees on Sterling. So, the short answer to your question is that they're all looked at individually and on their merits. And then, the case of Sterling is an example where staff decided that the damage to the trees would have been too much to justify the sidewalk installation.
Thank you. And you approach these, obviously, when you're doing roadwork, you look at doing sidewalks, correct? So, how would, a question about how you give priority to sidewalks. If we have areas in the city that are top priority for sidewalks, and we're not doing them, and yet, in this case, you've got residents opposing sidewalks, and we want to do them, I have trouble with that. Can you comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it comes down to, we have a project in this area. We have funding available, and we'll have equipment and crews in there disturbing the area where the sidewalk should go anyways. So, it's an opportune time to complete needed sidewalk infill.
Okay. We don't agree on that, but however, I'll have a comment at the time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counsel Aronitis?
Yes, thank you, through Mayor Verbanovic. My question is more aligned, I just want a little better clarification from Mr. Redman about our sidewalk infill policy, because I don't recall seeing it in our agenda setting that we're going to be dealing with the sidewalk infill, but I could be mistaken. So, if you could give me a better clarification on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are planning to bring sidewalk infill policy back to committee in May, May 25th is our target date. Level outline the rationale, how we prioritize sidewalk infill, a refined process for working with citizens in identified project areas.
Okay, so we will be definitely seeing this, then?
Through the mayor, yes.
Okay. Then, that's good to know, because that definitely influences my decision on what we're going to do tonight, and I, more or less, I will be supporting Counsel Marsh's recommendation. Thank you.
Counsel Gazola?
Yeah, I wonder if staff could give me some indication? Are there any statistics on safety issues or incidences in these two blocks? Is there any history of that?
Through the mayor, we looked at collisions on Simeon in the area that's identified for sidewalk infill, and there was one, two motor vehicle, one collision between two motor vehicles. Those collisions, though, only do report, police-reported collision, so if there's a minor fender bender or a minor collision with a pedestrian, those aren't picked up in our collision reporting.
Okay, so there's basically, the collision that was reported, was it a matter that there wasn't a sidewalk there, or was it due to another issue?
Through the mayor, I understand it was somebody reversing out of a driveway, and somebody came around the corner and rear-ended a vehicle.
So, basically, nothing to do with sidewalk. I have a comment later on when it comes down. I just want to...
Just try not to sort of make the little sidebar comment. Staff are trying to give the best answers they can, so let's respect that.
Oh, what did I do that it was wrong? I'm sorry.
Well, you were, staff gave an answer, and then you're sort of giving a, well, that basically means nothing. Like, they're just trying to do what they, their job.
I apologize. I didn't mean to. I'm just trying to make a point that it was nothing to do with sidewalks. Just a little piece of history about sidewalks, and Counsel Schneider asked about it. In the olden days, when you had a new subdivision, a new area, people did not get sidewalks like they do today. They did not get curbs and gutters. They had to sign up, if the majority of the assessment on the street wanted it, they would sign up for sidewalks, curbs and gutters and trees and all that, and you had to pay additional local improvement taxes for a 10-year period. And so, of course, in those days, people that were there paying the bill felt that they could do without that, and that's how we grew up with these areas in the city that don't have sidewalks.
Kate, just before I come to you, Counsel Marsh, for the motion, two questions. And Counsel Gazola was sort of getting at one issue, and one of the things that I've come to understand is there was a history back about 30 years ago, I believe, with respect to sidewalks in the neighborhood, and there was, I'm led to believe, a petition at the time to put sidewalks in by some neighbors, but it went through the process. It didn't meet the criteria that Counsel Gazola spoke of, and therefore, it didn't proceed. Is that correct? Can staff confirm that? Staff are aware of that?
Through the mayor, that was before my time at the city, so I have to look into it to see if that was the case.
Almost before your time, before you were born, right? I say that with the utmost respect. Okay, we'll sort of rely on history to clarify that. The only other question I wanted to ask about, since we're asking questions, and it came up tonight, was this issue of the slip lane. And can someone explain to me what, how that, or why that is disappearing? Because it would seem to me that, just knowing that area, knowing the bend there, having taken that turnoff on a number of occasions, a T-intersection at a bend just seems to be prone to all sorts of rear ends potentially. And so, I'm trying to understand what the thinking is there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure the reasoning for this one. The region is leading a reconstruct and safety review of that portion of Weber. There are collisions that occur on Weber Street in that area of the S-bend, but typically, we remove those because they aren't very pedestrian-friendly. They create higher traffic speeds on the side streets, because they're a more direct route, rather than creating a 90-degree turn in the roadway. So, that was a planning design from the 1950s and 60s that cities throughout North America are working on removing, so they improve pedestrian safety overall.
And I get the pedestrian end of things. I guess I'm more concerned about what it may do in terms of vehicular safety. And that S-bend, particularly in the winter months, I mean, when there's accidents, they usually happen in the winter months, because it's slippery and people end up sliding and either end up in the cemetery fence or hitting each other, or whatever the case is. And I, because that's my root home every day, I see those kinds of things on a periodic basis. So, I'm just, you're saying the region is driving that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. They're looking at that portion as part of their reconstruct project, which is targeted for about 2017. They are looking at changing the grade across the roadway to reduce the way that it drops off towards Simeon Street. They're also looking at changing the pavement material to a more textured pavement throughout that portion of the turn to improve traction through that area.
Okay. So, that, essentially, what you're saying is if we want to take a look at that slip-off lane issue, it needs to be raised at the region?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's my understanding. Counselor Marsh and myself attended a meeting with the region to look at the design of that portion of Weber Street about three weeks ago.
Okay, I'll talk to Counsel Marsh about it. Counsel Davey, is this a question? Okay, go ahead.
Sir, just before we get to the full motion...
Sir, just before we get to the full motion, I just want to make sure I understand completely here. So the tender has already, is already out, it's already published, advertised, because this is April 23rd. And so it has the proposed alignment of the sidewalk, and we can remove it, that's been covered a couple of times now, but if I understood correctly, the alignment cannot change. So ultimately, regardless of what happens when we relook at the infill policy, we will be voting on whether to approve the sidewalk as designed or not at all.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The sidewalk alignment can vary at this point after tender closes. It's really if we talk about narrowing the road or reconfiguring something in the road, then we're going to have to do some redesign. But generally speaking, if we're just shifting the sidewalk a little bit to accommodate some requests from a neighbor, then that's possible.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Marsh, over to you.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify my earlier comment. You know, I absolutely have been struggling with this decision, and I'm quite happy that we're not having to make a hard and fast decision. And part of today, we will, but today, I feel that, you know, if we had voted on it, the only reason I would have felt compelled to vote for the sidewalk is not because at all that I want to upset the neighbors there, on the contrary. It's more because I would feel a duty to uphold the policy and set up, be consistent in my decision-making over the next four years, when every time this comes up. I have heard, I have talked to many residents, not only on Simeon, but in other areas, and you know, there is a perception that when sidewalk infill affects people who are more empowered to speak their mind, or more able to gather support from each other, that it's when they're more privileged that then we give in. But if, but then, and then there's a perception that those neighborhoods that perhaps have busier populations, or more minorities, or whatever it might be, that are less ready to come and fight for what they want, that then the sidewalk gets railroaded through whether they like it or not. And I want to make sure that I'm not the kind of counselor who would go ahead and just go along with whoever is the squeaky wheel, but not consider the thoughts about the people who aren't there to come in great numbers and speak on their behalf. And so please understand that that's where this is coming from, and I look forward to a time later this spring when we can come to a decision about how we're going to move forward with the sidewalk infill policies, that we can be consistent going forward. So with that, I put my motion on the table.
Okay, and it has been seconded previously, so Counselor, a whole number of people are looking in to speak. Counselor Schneider?
Yes, again, I want to thank the delegation for coming in tonight and dressing so well. I didn't know if you were the choir, or Winnipeg Jets fans possibly, but great coordination in that. Thank you so much for your impassioned presentation tonight. I like to have policies, but I also want to have the ability to say one size doesn't always fit all, and that streetscapes are sacrifices for minimal benefits may not be worth it. So there's still much to consider, but thank you so much for showing up tonight and supporting this.
Counselor Yanetski?
Yeah, thank you. The policy that's, sorry, the motion that's presented by Counselor Marsh here to consider deferring the issue, on the sidewalk issue, to next month or to June, I'm prepared to support that, because I think it's important that we look at the revision, not the revision, but the report that'll come back from staff in terms of what they have to present, and I think it'll probably give us some options to consider. So what this basically means in the end is that I think yourselves as a delegation will probably have to come back on that date in May and be present and offer your comments again, if that's the need that you may have to do. So I do believe in walkability, and I also believe that sidewalks, if they're not really needed, then we should have an option to remove them. But each one, and each sidewalk street has to be considered on its own merits. So I'm prepared to support this motion for the time being.
Counselor Gazola?
Ooh, that was fast. Yeah, I want to start out by saying that due to my terrible weight problem, I've walked a lot all my life, and I continue to walk and cycle, and it's really important to me. And part of that means sometimes when there's a sidewalk only on one side of the street, I walk a little bit further to get across the street. I think it's important that we have sidewalks, and I'm consistent on this issue. Over the last 14 years, I've always erred on the side of the neighborhood. I mean, this is a grandfathering issue. It's not an issue now, when we build new parts of our community, sidewalks go in automatically. People that move into the neighborhood know from day one that there are sidewalks there, and they, when they do start to do their landscaping and their planning, that's all there from day one. But we have a lot of areas in the city where we have to deal with grandfathering. And so it's these areas, and usually these areas are, in most cases, quieter areas where there's not a lot of traffic, and people have grown up and raised families there, and are used to either walking without any sidewalks or just having one sidewalk. I totally favor that, at least having one sidewalk. But to me, this is a question, and this is a big issue that we're, this new council is dealing with, this whole issue about neighborhoods and the importance of neighborhoods. This is a neighborhood situation, as far as I'm concerned. And if the majority of the people in the neighborhood prefer to continue with the way they've had things, I think that's important, and we need to recognize that. And so, you know, really, if we do believe in neighborhoods, they, we have to respect what they want to do in the neighborhood. It affects them much, much more than anybody else. Like I say, I've been in that neighborhood a few times with a car and walked it maybe once or twice or on my bike, but I don't do that all the time, but the people in the neighborhood do. And the thing is, in the older parts of the city where we have this grandfathering, when new people move into the area, they know what the situation is. They know that before they decide to finally settle there. In conclusion, I will support this deferral for the time being, but I have been waiting for a number of years for us to tweak, that's all, to tweak our infill policy. And hopefully now, it will come back to council, because we will run into this many more times down the road. 50 years from now, 100 years from now, when we're all into new areas, sidewalks will be there. But for the next few years, we will continue to run into this, and I believe that the neighborhoods are kings. What the neighborhood wants, that's what we should support.
Counselor Fernandez?
What a great show of neighborhood support, and I'm always thrilled to see when we have a whole section of the gallery full of people who are working together, getting to know each other and fighting for a cause, because that is your legacy. And you will continue to build your community by just this one battle, and I think that that's wonderful. I know I went through exactly the same situation as what Counselor Marsh did in my first year, and it is very challenging, and it's very emotional, and it's, you're really, really torn between a rock and a hard place, I guess, if you want to put it that way. You have a beautiful street full of history and heritage and amazing trees, and I've seen, and I'm a gardener, so I appreciated some of the wonderful gardens that were put right out to the edge of the curb, and you know, what you've done is really beautiful. You've managed to landscape areas that don't need watering all the time, and I think that that's from an environmental perspective, you're doing something positive for your area. There is a sidewalk on this street, and for many, many years, residents, including the children, have chosen to walk safely to school, to the yard, to the park, on that side of the street, without, you know, bury any problems, major concerns, no deaths that I've heard of. I know that's pretty dramatic, but you know, I think we have to take the area specific, we have to look at the fact that this may be a heritage issue, that this is a neighborhood issue. And if there was absolutely no sidewalk there at all, I probably would look at it a little bit differently. But that's not the case here. So I think that the people who are, as Counselor Gazola mentioned, who are moving into the area are fully aware of, there's a sidewalk on one side, but there's nothing on another. So I'm really glad that Counselor Marsh has taken this opportunity to encourage you all to come and speak to us here tonight, and that we're going to take consideration as we look at our infill policy before we make any decision on your street. Again, kudos to all of you for coming in together and standing strong.
Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're in the long overdue process of reviewing the various policies that make up our pedestrian charter, it's not just one. And to me, that's a very good thing, when you look at this established and very beautiful street and community. I don't see any way that this council could justify this sidewalk plan, which, in my opinion, is going to threaten some mature trees in the neighborhood, which I said is a beautiful neighborhood. We have to examine these policies, the city policies, and as Counselor Schneider said, not try to live with a one-size-universal sidewalk policy. I can't justify this sidewalk proposal, and while I have no issue with delaying this process until June, I'm also certain that that review is not going to change my mind about voting against sidewalks on Simeon. And by the way, I see no problem with this council giving close attention to, individual attention to each sidewalk proposal, when there are people in the neighborhood who object to it. We have to examine the individual merits of those proposers. And I said earlier in this council, earlier this evening, that you people are the experts. In any neighborhood, the people who live there are the experts, and I think we should, whenever we have a chance, listen to the experts in those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just do want to echo the comments about thanking you for coming in and making your presentation tonight. I appreciate hearing from the residents. However, I'm not one that can throw the current policy under the bus. That policy came into effect and was adopted with considerable feedback from the community, including those who led the pedestrian charter, and those members on the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee. And that is our advisory committee that would be able to provide input into this type of a policy, and I think that that's really important. That's somewhat, some of the people who are going to be directly affected by our decisions with the sidewalk infill policy. I think we haven't done justice with using our Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee. We continue to lack feedback from them, and they would be someone who should be advising or having a standard statement when we're dealing with these coming forward to council, because I think that has to have some weight as well. I appreciate the residents who live there, I appreciate the trees, however, there's other sides than just living there, and I think that's important, and we can't forget that. However, we're not here to debate that today. I am very supportive of continuing to work with the sidewalk infill policy to address the concerns that I have, to bring forward some of what the pedestrian charter continues to address, as well as the concerns as the member of council who represents the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee. So I think we need to look at it from a holistic view, and I think the opportunity to do that, for me, will be when we deal with that in May. But I do appreciate hearing from the residents and for your time coming out tonight.
Counselor Davey?
Thank you. I'll echo some of the comments from Counselor Galloway-Seelock. I will be, to start off, I will be supporting the motion by Counselor Marsh. But I do think there is a broader, a much broader demographic that needs to be consulted. And my fear when we're looking at this is if it comes, if it ends up boiling down to, frankly, NIMBYism, resident concern, which is, with all due respect to the residents here, and I appreciate you coming in, and it was actually was a fantastic presentation, but we've seen this, we've been sitting here for a while now, we've seen several times where there's rationale from community members for any given number of sidewalks. And my fear is, we end up with the policy that has a lot of gap-tooth sidewalk policy within the city. And it tends to be in the downtown core, which is more troubling, because that's where you want to see more people walking. So I will be supporting it, I remain optimistic that we can come to some kind of resolution that sees a sidewalk go in. And I do challenge my fellow members of council that when we do look at the sidewalk infill policy, we defer to the statistics and the science behind whether or not the sidewalk will be used, and not the particular one small, certain demographic that doesn't want to see it being used.
Okay, I think all the comments have been made except for mine, so I'll make mine now. And I too want to thank the neighborhood for coming in this evening and doing such a great job of articulating your concerns, as well as Mr. Boz for coming in and presenting the other argument. I think it's important for all of us, particularly on council, to remember when we deal with issues like this, yes, we have an obligation to hear and be responsive to concerns from individual neighborhoods, as an example, because yes, they have the most to gain or lose in a particular issue. But as a council, we have a responsibility to not only consider those particular issues and concerns, but also to consider the greater good for the entire community. And that's part of the role that we play as elected officials, in trying to find that right balance between the various factors that we have to consider. I struggle with this issue, because I have been one of the ones in the past who have been strong advocates for sustainable, walkable, complete streets. Walkable, bikable, and yes, drivable as well, but it's looking at the whole picture. And I've been a strong proponent of the pedestrian charter. However, I'm also not naive to recognize that on a number of these instances, we have heard concerns from different neighborhoods. Last term, at the end, we heard from the Palmer Kennedy neighborhood, we heard from the Glasgow neighborhood, we're now hearing from this neighborhood. Excuse me, I know these are issues that aren't going to go away, and in that, from that perspective, it's probably good that we are looking at the, at our sidewalk infill policy, and either reaffirming it or making some tweaks and adjustments, if that's necessary. And part of those tweaks and adjustments is, how do we engage neighborhoods and, you know, perhaps look at some of the kinds of solutions that are being proposed in this neighborhood, as opposed to just a straight line, which could have a greater impact in terms of existing trees and so on. So it is a balance. I think at this point in time, because there is a review process in place, and it's not going to impact this project, I'm willing to support the motion in order to allow that review to happen, to get that input, and then to factor that ultimately into the decision that we make about this particular area. I understand some of the safety concerns that, after having walked it, that the residents have raised, and also want to better understand the issue of the slip lane, I'll speak with Counselor Marsh and others about that afterwards. But fundamentally, it is important for us to keep in mind the mobility of all our citizens as we look at these issues. And while we may, you know, while there may be a group of people, particularly longstanding residents, who may not see a need today, as that- residents, who may not see a need today, as that neighborhood rejuvenates and young families potentially move in, and those young families have, you know, babies in strollers and are looking for sidewalks, are we going to meet the need of those neighborhoods going forward? And I think those are all the kinds of things that we need to think about, because the decision that we're making today is going to impact the neighborhood for the next 20, 30, or more years, in terms of the infrastructure that's being put in. So I will support the motion today. I do hope that as that infill policy comes back, that we will have done some engagement on it, particularly with some of the other groups like GRAC and so on, because it'll be important for me to hear those opinions for when that report comes back, and then we can deal with this issue at that point in time and make a decision that's fair for the neighborhood and also fair for the community as a whole, and consistent with whatever direction that policy takes in the future. So with that, there is a motion on the floor.
Recorded vote?
Recorded vote, sure. Okay, if we can ask folks to vote. Okay, thank you very much. We'll make sure that you're aware of when that sidewalk infill policy comes back to council in May or June, so you can come at that point in time to be a delegation. Thank you again, everyone, for coming in this evening. Okay, we'll now move on to our next delegations, and it's with respect to PSI number two, which is the Kitchener Cultural Heritage Landscape Study, and we have two delegations for that item. First of all, Mr. Bob Huck.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for allowing me my time once again. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Counselors of the City of Kitchener. I'm Robert Huck, most referred to as Bob Huck, the owner of Huck Love Company, Inc. I own the building property at 120 Victoria Street South in Kitchener. I've participated and was involved in the Kitchener Heritage Building Index four-step process in 2009. As a result, my property was not approved for the MHR on February 1st, 2010. Since then, the property has been removed from the inventory of Heritage Building Index. Only through my continued attendance at Heritage Kitchener since 2010 have I learned that the City of Kitchener is proposing to incorporate my property once again within the blanketed area under the scrutiny of the cultural heritage landscapes. As a private property owner, I am absolutely astounded that Heritage Kitchener has commented that they have included the input of the citizens of the City of Kitchener. As a private property owner within the referred Heritage Warehouse District area, I have never been notified or contacted by any of the City of Kitchener's heritage staff or the Heritage Committee regarding cultural heritage landscapes. It is oppressive that the city's staff, committee members, and volunteers are able to incorporate private properties without any dialogue with the property owner prior to putting them on any list. It is also appalling the cost and expense to the City of Kitchener's taxpaying citizens and the region as a whole. It's been referred that the justification has to do with the Ontario Policy Statement and the city's official plan. It's also been stated, policy plans are to be read in conjunction with the provincial policy statement. They take precedence over the policies of the provincial policy statement to the extent of any conflict. The cost to administrate this Heritage Kitchener department at the expense of the taxpayers, and then to hire outside private consultants to reach our city's heritage and the cultural heritage landscapes to create a beautiful, so-called by the councilors, a coffee table book, to make a decision on my property, this is absolutely unacceptable. I believe it's my right as a private property owner with the decisions of my property's future. City of Kitchener within the region, the big shift, is revitalizing with the LRT new companies and has projected an increase in the population of another estimated 200,000 people by 2031. This process could hinder future investors and developers within the region of Waterloo. There's been comments made by all levels referring to the current process of the MHR. The process is like throwing the property owner under the bus. I heard it earlier tonight of another issue. Moving forward down the track, I strongly suggest, whatever this new process becomes within the cultural heritage landscapes, that the process doesn't throw the property owner under the eye on. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Huck? Counselor Ionitis?
Thank you for coming in today. So you're saying you were never really notified about this process at all?
No, it's only because, Bill, I've continued ever since my earlier, to go every possible Tuesday, there's only nine of them a year, to Heritage Kitchener, just to keep on top of things that regard my property at 120 Victoria Street. So that's really where I gained the knowledge that this was going to happen.
Okay. And how long have you owned the property for?
My grandfather bought it in 1937.
Okay. Yeah, I totally agree with your comments. I think you're, they're bang on, and I think it's up to the property owner to decide whether or not the fate of their own property. And I agree, I think it is oppressive. So I think you stated it very well. And I'm prepared to make a motion to remove his property from the list.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back to you for an amendment at that time. There don't appear to be any other questions at this point, Mr. Huck.
Thank you.
Thank you for being in, coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Mr. Mark McInnis. Welcome, Mr. McInnis.
Thank you very much. I don't know if that feels louder, standing right in front of it. I would, thanks for having me tonight. I'd like to start by saying how much I actually love this community. It's my home, along with my wife and my three kids. I take frequent walks on the Walter Bean Trail. I live in one of the existing heritage districts. I run along the Iron Horse Trail, although not as much as I should. When my kids were younger, I spent far too much time at Victoria Park. And I also own properties in several of the areas that are considered within the CHL study. My wife and I, we were not born here, but it would take us an awful lot to leave at this point. So when I stand up here, opposed to the study, it is not because I don't love the community or the wonderful areas that are within it. I sent all of you a letter on Friday discussing my many concerns within the study. Included in that letter were the significant lack of public engagement involved in the process, a lack of precedence for other cities that we can pull from when we're looking at the cultural heritage landscapes, a lack of understanding on how this will impact the property owners and other stakeholders. And lastly, the massive scope that this proposed, that the proposed CHL is being, the massive scope that this is taking. On top of this, I'm also deeply concerned with the following. Inventory-only was a term when I was here sort of last Monday that I heard over and over, and looking at the reports continues to sort of show up. It continues to be used over and over, however, with this approval tonight, these areas will no longer just be an inventory. These cultural heritage landscapes would be identified in the official plan and listed on the municipal heritage register. To me, this is clearly far more than an inventory. I also look at the report itself and feel that it is incredibly one-sided. If you go through the report and see sort of the one-sided documents, with little to no mention of any negative aspects whatsoever. With everything in life, we have to make decisions by weighing our pros and cons. If you only present the pros, it makes the decision very easy, however, it doesn't make it that the decision is right. Investment. We all have different ways of making investments. I personally have made significant investments in purchasing property. I truly believe that this, if this gets passed tonight, you're really throwing a massive wrench into the development that will take place in some of the key areas in this city, and negatively affect mine and others' personal investments. From the staff report that was prepared for the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee, it states, "Prior to the CHL study being considered by Heritage Kitchener, staff corresponded with those who expressed a concern with the recommendations of the CHL study. Staff explained, while these areas should continue to be identified in the study, citing the significance of the respective sites, and that the conservation of significant cultural heritage resources is a matter of provincial interest, that requires municipality to balance the rights of property owners with objectives that are in the broader community and public interest." So in that sort of report, it states that there's a requirement for balance, to balance the rights between the owners and the cultural heritage. So when this report was completed, requiring the areas to be listed, and, you know, is making these areas be listed on the municipal heritage register, before you consult with property owners, it is my opinion that that is the farthest thing from balance, you know, as far away from balance as you can get. I ask that a counselor request a deferral until the property owners within the CHL areas are consulted, and consideration is given to reducing the number of cultural heritage landscapes we're listing on the municipal heritage registry in our community. Baby steps are okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McInnis. We have a few counselors with questions for you. Counselor Ionitis?
Yes, through you, Mayor Verbanovic. Mr. McInnis, you said you have properties within the study area?
I have five properties that would be affected by it, yes.
You have five, and were you at all notified at all personally, or how were you notified of this process?
I found out about it on Friday, the 17th of April.
So you were never, you were never sent a notice at all?
Nothing.
Wow, okay. I think that's a, that's a big black eye on our part. If you, if you have five properties and you haven't even been noticed, sent a notice, that to me is glaring oversight. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. So we're talking specifically about St. Mark's Lutheran Church, correct? And the cultural heritage landscape surrounding the church?
I don't know where that church is, no. I'm talking about the entire sort of process that has happened.
Okay, so, I apologize, then you're not part of the, you're part of another, another group of cultural heritage landscape designations. Could you give me the address of the properties that you're talking about?
Can't, Mr. Clerk, I don't know, can we go into specific addresses, Madam Clerk?
But there are addresses that are listed on the Heritage Kitchener...
I'm just asking the clerk for clarification.
If the properties are rental properties, they're not considered personal information.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tarling, I didn't hear you.
If the properties are rental properties, they're not considered personal information. Okay, so are they rental properties?
There's a, I personally live in, in sort of one of the areas, sort of that would be affected by it. It's, my concern is more about the, about the process that went, you know, how this sort of came to be. I have a property on Frederick Street, on Waterloo Street, on Victoria Street.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that for me. So have you had any conversations with Mr. Benson about this?
I had one conversation on the phone since the, since last, last Monday's meeting.
Okay, and did he explain to you that the, that this was part of a phased process, and that this was, the next phase would be a phase-two process where there would be other processes happening in terms of contacting individual property owners?
Yes, however, he, it was also explained to me that... The cultural heritage landscape study has been a wide, sorry, I'm going back to the letter that I sent out. The study indicates that the only way for it to be removed, sorry, lost, for it to lose its heritage significance by means which, according to the project coordinator, included such unlikely events as being destroyed by fire. So once it goes onto this list, if I understand correctly, so we have an area of the city, and we're going to do this in 55 different areas, that those are now considered cultural heritage landscapes. And in order to be impacted for it to be removed from that list at some point, is going to be, require something like a fire to happen in order to remove its significance.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, I attended a number of the meetings, but that's not the understanding I had. So I guess you do understand that this is a living document, and that properties can be added and removed with further public consultation?
So my understanding of it is that it's not a specific property that's going to go on it, is that it's consuming an entire area, so that where something used to sort of go through an experience where, where a specific property would be designated, now it's throwing a net over a larger area that would then be considered within the heritage range, which allows sort of more, you know, so now if, if development is going to happen within, within that area, now it's going to require a heritage impact assessment study in order to sort of move forward with development. And when you have that sort of occupying 55 different areas within the community, I think it's a significant negative impact on development that would take place.
Okay, all right, your point's well taken, but I think that there's still more processes happening that you could, you will be involved in, and you can be involved in before, I mean, this is really just an inventory list, and I heard over and over again from our staff, and I stand corrected from Mr. Benson, that it's an inventory list, and that, you know, by casting a broader net, that we can now narrow down and look at more individual properties as well, but that the landscape is an opportunity for us to inventory larger areas. So if I'm not correct, I'm sure Mr. Benson will correct me that.
But if development is then happening within that area, does that just happen same as the way that it happens currently, or does that happen where there's all sorts of extra steps that are required from someone developing within that land?
I think that's a great question, and I think that's a question that, through you, to me, to Mr. Benson, he can answer while he's, while you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gazzola?
Yeah, I was trying to narrow in where, do you live in a heritage conservation district?
I do.
So that was, that was, which, which area, which conservation district?
I live in Upper Dune.
Is Upper Dune, is it, so that's been a conservation district, the longest in our community, so before you moved there, it was a conservation district?
And I...
And so there were, sorry, go ahead.
I love the area, I wouldn't change a thing about it, and I think it's fantastic. I think the problem that I have is that, is that now we're going to cast a net over massive chunks of land within the community.
Well, just your experience, how long have you lived in Upper Dune?
Sorry?
How long? How long have you lived there?
Six years.
Have you had any occasion or any problems because of the heritage designation for that area? Has it hindered you up to this point in any way?
No. And I'm not trying to develop the land.
Okay, and have you had a, like, I think there are a lot of rumors out there as to what this sort of thing does. It's unfortunate that you weren't aware of the public meetings that have been held so that you can learn more. Now, you did write a letter and I think that our staff did respond to you. Did you not receive a response?
The response I received back was a one line saying it would be, would go into consideration.
And there was no discussion?
That was the extent. And it wasn't from the staff, it was from the, sort of when I sent it to council, it was the original response back from council.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Etherington?
Mr. McGinnis, would you change the heritage designation on Upper Dune?
Absolutely not.
Why not?
I love it.
Why?
Everything about living there is fantastic.
So you like the heritage designation on the area you're living in, but you want to change it for other people elsewhere in the city?
No, my area is an existing heritage district and I think it's fantastic. And currently within our city, we have four of those areas. And then we're going to change this so that we have 55 separate areas.
I'm not sure I agree with you on that, but...
Can you explain?
Would you change the heritage designation on those other neighborhoods?
They're not currently designated as heritage in those other 55 areas.
Would you change it on the ones that are designated within those 55?
I think there are, I think you can take baby steps towards designating different areas that you find appropriate. If you looked at the people that were here tonight, sort of fighting for their neighborhood, what a wonderful engagement they had. And if you go after that community and have the engagement from the community in order to support that sort of heritage designation, I would love to see them do that. It's wonderful. However, to take that and spread it across, you had 183 signatures tonight for a sidewalk, yet we did a complete cultural heritage landscape study that had a total of 63 respondents. And from that 63 respondents, we're taking 55 separate areas of the city and putting them into a cultural heritage landscape.
Mr. Chair, could we get Mr. Bensonson to answer some of these problems? We have him sitting in the council chamber. This has happened before where he doesn't say a word, he's not allowed to speak. Let's get him up to answer some of these things.
He's allowed to speak. He'll answer the questions. We'll take questions of staff when we're done with the delegations as we normally do. So is that it for you right now, Councillor Etherington? Okay. Councillor Janetski?
Interesting that you mentioned that you live in the Upper Dune Heritage District and yet you have a concern on the heritage landscape, the 55 landscape areas. But are you aware that the heritage district that you live in versus the landscape is more restrictive than what we're dealing with tonight?
100%, yes.
And I can't understand the rationale that you would be arguing if this is more restrictive and this one is less restrictive.
I've chosen to live where I live and I'm totally comfortable with that. And I understand the restrictions that are in play and that is, I am 100% supportive of that. And I wouldn't change anything about it. My two young daughters walk to school down Dune Village Road that has no sidewalks and I would be here fighting with the people here tonight in order to prevent sidewalks from going in. I have no problem with where I live and sort of the decisions that we've made to live there. The problem that I have is that we're taking 55 separate areas of the city, some of them, including Upper Dune, that is currently has a heritage designation. And if you want to put the heritage landscape on that area, I'm totally fine with that. I also, sorry, if you wanted to put the, yeah, the heritage landscape and cover that area, I'm totally supportive of that. My problem is that we have other areas of the city that we're going to blanket this with, that there's been no sort of correspondence with. There's, there aren't other communities that we can look to to see what the impact is of us doing this, yet we're not taking, sitting there and saying, okay, we're going to change it from four heritage districts to six and find two other ones that we're going to support. What we're doing is we're going from four heritage districts and now we're going to have 55, we're going to have 55 areas of the city that we're identifying as cultural heritage landscapes.
Okay, I appreciate your position, but I differ from it. Mr. Mayor, when his email came in to us, I had referred it to Mr. Bensonson for comments and he did provide us with a response only to council back over the weekend. So he, Mr. Bensonson has a lot of the answers to the questions that have been raised here, so I would give him the opportunity to provide some responses to his actions through this whole process.
We'll be coming to him shortly. Any other questions of the delegation? Yeah, go ahead. If you can click in, Councillor Gazola, go ahead.
Are you familiar with the complete list of 55? Have you seen the list of 55?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you know exactly what properties?
I actually don't know all the areas, but I have seen the list, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that would be it. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. We now have questions of staff and Mr. Bensonson stands ready to answer any questions. Maybe just before I do, maybe, Mr. Bensonson, you can just outline what your response was to councillor or the email from the delegation about this, about the issue and the concerns raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a conversation with Mr. McGinnis and the response that I provided, Mr. McGinnis over the phone, was similar to the response that I did provide counsel in writing, in addressing his concerns. The first thing is that the study, the study area for this cultural heritage landscape study was the entire city. And so the community engagement measures that were undertaken reflect the broad study area and the broad scope of the study. And these include measures such as establishing a dedicated webpage, newspaper advertisements, two public meetings, and other measures that were identified in the staff report. It is true that we did not circulate every single property owner in the city. We did circulate certain property owners who owned single properties that in themselves were a single cultural heritage landscape. So for example, the institutional properties, the farmsteads, the estate properties. Notice of the study progress and all the public meetings were sent to all neighborhood associations, to various interest groups, and to individuals who attended the public meeting, and to others who asked to be put on a mailing list. And the attendance at the public meetings were excellent. I noted to Mr. McGinnis that the purpose of the study is to create an inventory only, and that is correct. The identification of these significant cultural heritage landscapes does not impose restrictions on property owners. So if council approves this study tonight, tomorrow, those properties will not be designated, they will not be listed, they will not have formal heritage status. Importantly, I advised Mr. McGinnis that in Phase Two, the city will be engaging with all property owners who own property within significant cultural heritage landscapes prior to the identification of those significant cultural heritage landscapes in the official plan and prior to them being listed on the municipal heritage register. And this will absolutely involve mailing individual notices to each and every property owner who lives and owns property within those significant cultural heritage landscapes. We're committed to doing this in baby steps, as he has said. And the second phase is that baby step where we will engage with property owners, have more public meetings, and send individual notices to describe what it means to be listed on the municipal heritage register and what the implications are. He mentioned the 63 respondents in the questionnaire and staff's response is that it is sometimes a challenge to generate high numbers of respondents to public surveys and questionnaires, but we believe that the responses that we did receive were very valuable and they were considered in formulating the recommendations and conclusions. But by no means was the survey and questionnaire the only thing that was taken into consideration in coming up with the recommendations and conclusions of this study. I did explain that this is a living document, it will be monitored like all inventories, and properties may be added to and they may be removed, subject to change, development, further community engagement, and new decisions being made by council. I think the comment with regard to the fire was taken out of context. By that, I was describing the types of things that might influence change in a cultural heritage landscape, such as the destruction of heritage attributes, demolition, fire being one example. And lastly, I explained to Mr. McGinnis that we have a strong history of success in balancing development and heritage conservation efforts, particularly in the downtown, and it's very important for us to proactively identify these significant cultural heritage landscapes in order to continue to accommodate change and development while addressing our requirements to address policy requirements as identified in the provincial legislation as well as the regional and city official plan.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Fernandez, you have a question?
Yes, so the one question that you didn't answer in your preamble was Mr. McGinnis's assertion that there would be new steps that he would have to follow if he wanted to redevelop, and correct me if I'm wrong by a nod, or if he wanted to redevelop any of the properties that were in part of that cultural heritage landscape area that he owned, that has been identified.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, not as a result of the approval of this study. If there are going to be new steps, it would only result through council's decision to list the significant cultural heritage landscapes on the municipal heritage register, and that will only happen after further public engagement and further consideration by council.
Good, that's exactly what I thought. Thank you.
Councillor Iannidis?
Yes, through you, Mayor Verbanovic. Mr. Bensonson, we had 63 responses. Can you give me an indication of where these responses were from?
So we had a survey and questionnaire that was made available to those who attended the public meetings, and it was also made available electronically on the city's webpage for the cultural heritage landscape study. And so they were received both in hard copy, but mostly they were received electronically through the webpage.
Okay. Can you tell me who were the respondents from Kitchener at all or were they from other communities?
They were from Kitchener. I understand Mr. McGinnis has identified that there was one respondent, one answer that said, "I don't live in Kitchener." But we do have all the addresses and the names of all the respondents. We didn't disclose that in the cultural heritage landscape study document, but we have that on record.
Okay, can you disclose what some of the statistics are? Like, is it 90% Kitchener residents or is it?
I, well, I mean, without having the figure in front of me, I would suggest that the 62 out of the 63 were Kitchener residents, based on the nature of the response.
Okay. My other question is regarding, if we had the intention of knowing what these areas were as far as certain areas of, why weren't, even though I know it's early in the process, why aren't residents informed from the very beginning on that their property may be affected in the future?
We know that we're going to go back to the residents. We know that the implications of this study, that there are no implications, there are no restrictions on the property owners. And we know that in Phase Two, we will be communicating with each and every individual property owner to have that discussion about what the potential implications are. And so it just made sense for us to deal with that communication, that detailed communication in Phase Two.
Okay. Because my concern is whether there's any association with heritage, it has a negative impact on property owners. And even, without even giving them the benefit of the doubt right off the bat, I think is, I think is a route that we shouldn't have done. I think we should have notified them right off the bat. And I know I can understand the logistics of it, but I think it's important because we're, they're the ones that are affected, they're the ones that are going to have to suffer the consequences. And so, but anyways, I'll refrain from my comments and wait till later on because I think, I think instead of Mayor Verbanovic, I think I want to put forward a deferral because I think we need a, I think we need a broader scope and broader discussion on this. I don't think, I don't think residents were notified properly and I think we need to, I think we need to get some more advice as well. I think, in fact, I think we, I would like to get our real estate agent and wonder what, how the impacts that would have and get a better understanding because I think we're jumping the gun here.
Okay, just before I continue on with others with respect to questions, just to be absolutely clear, Mr. Bensonson, you're saying that, if I understand you correctly, that creating these areas has no implications whatsoever for the property owners in the affected areas? The only thing that it does is it essentially puts them on notice that we are going to do a more in-depth look at some of the properties in the area and there will be a process where they'll be notified as part of that and they'll be able to be engaged. Is that correct?
That is correct. It puts the city on notice that these are the areas that we have to concentrate on and these are the areas that we will be examining in detail in Phase Two and involving the property owners in that discussion.
But it has no implications whatsoever?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted that clear before people continue on with their questions. Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad to hear you say that, Leon. During the whole process, as we were putting together this landscape report, I heard you say several times, "Do we have any legal choice on this? We're told by the region and the province." Is that correct, that we have to do this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Under the Planning Act, under the provincial policy statement of the Planning Act, there is a requirement that both built, significant built heritage resources and significant cultural heritage landscapes shall be conserved. The regional official plan contains specific policies directing area municipalities to conserve cultural heritage landscapes. And the Kitchener official plan, the new Kitchener official plan, contains policies specifically addressing that significant cultural heritage landscapes shall be identified in the official plan, listed on the municipal heritage register, and conserved. So there is absolutely policy requirements requiring that these significant areas be identified and conserved.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, while I'm speaking and I have the floor, I would appreciate councillor Ian Hudders staying quiet, even though he opposes everything that involves heritage. My second question to Mr. Bensonson, during the process, we had opponents speaking at public meetings, am I correct? People who were opposed to the whole process came out and spoke at those public meetings. Is that correct?
That is correct. People spoke both in favor and opposed.
And could you give council just a brief explanation of why we even do this, this whole cultural landscape process? Why do we do it? Why does it matter?
There, well, obviously, in addition to the policy requirements, it's identified as being important in our cultural identity. It contributes to economic revitalization. Conserving significant cultural heritage resources is an important part of what we do in communities and in the strength of the city and the community.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Councillor Gazola?
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify a couple of other points, perhaps I should have asked them last week, but as an example, we have here the Carndale neighborhood. When we go into the next phase, you're stating that every household will be notified of where we're going. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. So we're taking this in small groups. That is part of the reason why Phase Two will be taking three years to accomplish. We are going to prioritize these areas, identify them in groups, and then tackle the community engagement process in smaller... engagement process in smaller groups. And so, yes, every single property owner will receive notice of what we are doing, why we are doing it, and will have, receive invitations to attend the public meetings.
So will council be dealing with a smaller group, or will we wait till we have all of the groups dealt with?
I suspect that we might be dealing with in smaller groups coming forward.
Okay, and I want to just refer to Mr. Huck's concern. I think he's in the warehouse district, I'm not sure if that's clarified, but let's take going down the road, in a district like that, let's say there are twenty properties, what happens if five of them want to be out of that, out of this process? Will that be possible? Will it be possible to do the warehouse district for the other five?
It, through you, Mr. Mayor, it is possible for council to make decisions at the time that these areas are going to be listed on the municipal heritage register to exclude individual properties.
That's something we can deal with in Phase Two?
That's correct.
When we really deal with the issue. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. So, Mr. Benson, if developers' property is located within a cultural heritage area, and they chose to put up a high-rise in that area, let's say it didn't affect, you know, a heritage building per se, would that, would there be blocks, roadblocks in the way from them pursuing that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is if a significant culture heritage landscape is already listed on the municipal heritage register, in the context of the next phase, Phase Two.
Right, if it's in the landscape, but the building itself is not of significant heritage, you know what I mean? There's some pretty wide landscapes that are affected here.
The key question to ask ourselves is if the development proposal could have an impact on the heritage attributes of that particular landscape. If it doesn't, and if it won't, then there won't be any requirements. If there is the potential that it could have a negative impact, either because that property is significant, or perhaps it's located immediately adjacent, another property that has been individually identified, then we can ask for a heritage impact assessment to understand what that impact is and how that impact can be mitigated.
And so theoretically, it could still go forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. All of the examples of development proposals, where we have requested a heritage impact assessment, have always resulted in a situation where the development has proceeded, the applicant has achieved what they want to achieve, and yet we've been able to conserve the cultural heritage resource or certain attributes of that resource.
Okay, thank you.
There don't appear to be any further questions, so I'll have a few of my own. Mr. Benson, so when we looked at this issue and dealt with this issue, did we handle it in a way that's, from a public advisory point of view, in a way that's consistent or different than how we handle other citywide planning initiatives? In other words, when we do, let's say, a comprehensive zone change or something like that, do we actually send something out to all the properties, or do we promote it through an ad in the record, maybe our website, and so on?
To answer your question, I think the one situation, or perhaps comparable study, let's say it's the official plan review, and in that case, it didn't go to, notice didn't go to every single individual property owner, but there were advertisements, there were public meetings, and this is what we did in this case.
Okay, and so it is conceivable that there are residents out there that weren't aware of this, based on that?
Yes, that is correct. That is conceivable, that is possible.
You indicated earlier very clearly that there are no implications in terms of creating these areas for the properties, other than what perhaps might be perceived implications as a result of that, but there would not be any impact? And as a council, we may or may not do anything in terms of putting individual properties on the register, or actually designating any properties subsequent to that, is that correct? Like, we're not obligated to designate anything or put it on a register after the fact?
There is a policy in the municipal official plan that significant culture heritage landscapes shall be listed on the municipal heritage register. So there is an expectation that once we identify these areas, they will be, through this study, as significant culture heritage landscapes, they will be identified in the official plan, and then they will be listed on the municipal heritage register as a next step. Through that process, council can decide to identify all the properties within these boundaries as part of that significant culture heritage landscape, or they can decide to exclude certain properties from that significant culture heritage landscape, such as Mr. Huck's property, for example.
Or could council decide to exclude all the properties, and simply have the area listed as a heritage landscape?
That is, it is entirely within council's discretion in terms of which cultural heritage landscapes they list and what they don't list.
And which properties they list or don't list subsequent to that?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be very clear on what council can or can't do, and what the potential implications are, because where you were going earlier with the response, it suggested that they would automatically, or sorry, that council would consider them, and that would result on them being on the register, and by being on the register, there are impacts on the properties. But you're saying, when we do consider that subsequently, we may not have to necessarily include any of the properties?
If council decides that the, all the properties within that significant culture heritage landscape should not be identified, or that significant culture heritage landscape should not be listed on the municipal heritage register, that's council's decision.
Okay. And the last question I have is, it's been pointed out that we're at the forefront of this issue, in terms of how other municipalities are dealing with this. Why do we feel we need to be at the forefront of this issue?
Part of the reason why we're doing this now is through the leadership and guidance of the region of Waterloo. They established regional implementation guidelines for cultural heritage landscapes in August of 2013, and so they set in motion the expectation for area municipalities to go through this process. We felt it was very important to be proactive and to identify these significant culture heritage landscapes now, knowing that there are going to be changes in the community through the LRT, through intensification in neighborhoods, and it was important for us to go through this process sooner than later.
So where are the other six municipalities at on this?
Sorry?
Yeah, there's six municipalities in the region.
The area municipalities?
Yes.
Within the region, in terms of Waterloo, Cambridge?
Yep.
And the townships? So they, the city of Cambridge has a heritage master plan that identifies not cultural heritage landscapes, but I'm trying to remember the terminology, I think they're heritage areas. Certain other townships have specifically dealt individually with cultural heritage landscapes on a one-off, on a site-by-site basis, but no other, no municipality has undertaken a comprehensive inventory looking at where these cultural heritage landscapes are and why they are significant.
Those are all the questions I had. Okay, thank you. I'll now go to Counselor Singh to bring in the motion from committee. Can you click in? Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, this is from, originating from the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee for item number, I guess it would be two, right? Yes, two. That it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davy, I believe there's some refined wording to the latter part of that motion. You can just clarify that?
Yes, the new wording's in front of you, it actually is just mostly clerical. The total, some number of changes is the word heritage was inserted three times, so it's a very heritage amendment as well. So it's, there's no real material change, just covering it off, making sure that all of the conditions are related to the heritage changes.
So Counselor Singh, that's what you're moving, actually?
That's correct. That's a moving as, it's presented on the paper, I guess.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So that has been moved, and seconded, Counselor Ionadus?
I want to discuss my deferral.
You can make a motion to defer?
Yes.
And indicate the timing of your deferral.
The way I'm looking at it is, I don't have my calendar here. I think in light that it's, that the summer's coming, and that, I think that in order to get proper, broader discussion and notifying the public, I think we need to look at this sometime in October, or maybe late September, and looking at a council meeting, or... So I guess October 5th, I don't see, we don't have a council meeting in September, so October 5th, 2015.
So you're moving it to October 5th?
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will hold that in abance, and I'll give people an opportunity to speak to, oh, sorry, yes, is there a second or for the deferral? Okay, seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. So I will hold it in abance and give people an opportunity to speak to it in the deferral. I'm not going to be going around twice, so please take your opportunity to speak to it at this point in time. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I'm not sure the purpose of the deferral, so I won't even refer to it. I think it's important that we heard from staff saying that what we do tonight really just draws out a plan as to where we're going down the road. We're not making any tough decisions tonight. My main concern at this point is discussing this amendment that's before us that is really premature. If an amendment were warranted, it perhaps can be discussed when we're dealing with Phase Two, when we're really making some decisions. At this point, it's totally inappropriate, it's out of place, but I just want to, I want to speak quickly about that. You know, heritage, heritage is a tough nut to sell, it's a tough thing to deal with. And when we're dealing with heritage, we need all the help we can get in dealing with heritage issues. The problem is, there are so many rumors out there as to what an individual owner can or cannot do because of heritage designations. And regardless of whether we like it or not, heritage is something that we're obligated to do by our official plans, and also by legislation, not only of the province, but of the federal government. Heritage is an important aspect, and it's, we have, we have things that we have to do to preserve our heritage for future generations. So it's a tough issue to deal with. Now this brings me to the actions of the Westmount Golf Club, who by their actions give strength to others who are considerably uninformed when it comes to heritage issues. By their taking their action, they really do feed this frenzy of not really knowing what's going on. And I, that, I don't expect that from a good, a good constituent or a good civic customer of ours, and I'm really disappointed that they have taken that action to really throw the whole thing, to raise really questions that shouldn't be there. And the reason, one of the reasons I'm so totally opposed to their action is that it does really muddy the waters, but they are a group that have had special, really, they've had special incentives, issues given to them by this community. Back, I think it's forty-four years ago, they were given the opportunity to freeze their assessment on their property, which means that for the past forty-four years, their taxes have remained the same. And it was, they did something that we were allowed to do through a change in provincial legislation. So we were, we did it to assist them when they were having financial problems, and we have stuck by it. Now since those days, other private courses in our community have asked, but not have been afforded the same benefit. So to really sum it up, back in 1971, Westmount asked the city, and the city supported them. And here now, in 2015, we're basically asking them to trust us to go along with this whole issue of trying to establish a cultural landscape. There's no intent whatsoever for the city or for our staff to try to operate the golf course, or to interfere with their operations. And really, I just keep going back to the fact that if some, if an organization like that throws up roadblocks for us, it makes it extremely difficult for us to move ahead in this area that is really important to us. If anything, that needs to be changed with respect to not only them, but to everyone, we need to treat everyone in the same fashion. But we will get that opportunity when we deal with it, when we go through Phase Two of the process. I just wanted to say one final point. I've been involved with heritage at the city for a good part of the last twelve, fourteen years, and I really, I've been amazed over that period of time, the way our staff has done everything to assist the community that get involved with heritage districts. A good example is, staff are prepared to go around, go along with this mealy-mouthed type of amendment that I don't think is required, but staff, in order to keep things moving, have agreed to go along with it. But I think we put our staff really in a tough position. In conclusion, I would ask that we move ahead with this, we don't defer the issue, the, we had a long discussion on this last week, unfortunately, Counselor Ionadus was unable to be here, for whatever reason, that's immaterial, but I think he did miss a lot of the discussion, it was a very lengthy discussion that we had at that time. So I really am not in favor of the deferral, and I would ask that council support, and support me in not granting any special recommendations for any group at this time until we deal with it in Phase Two.
Okay, so you're asking that we deal with the third paragraph separately?
We can argue that we vote on that separately and not support.
Okay.
We can still go ahead and pass the main resolution that is really, that is before us and was before us last week.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gazola has linked the current status that the golf course has as to the property taxes, as to his rationale, why additional preferential treatment shouldn't be given. Can I just get clarity from staff related to that? Because he's thrown that as a part of an argument, I'd like to get a better understanding.
Well, what clarification are you looking for? There's a historical agreement in place that sees Westmount Golf have their taxes frozen, and that was put in place a number of years ago. taxes frozen and that was put in place a number of years ago, four, over four decades ago, and it was based on legislation at the time.
That's what was made there, it was based on legislation at that time?
It was based on legislation at that time and, and a decision that the council of day could make, and they did make that decision.
That's a little bit of information that you had, that was said, you don't want to get that.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, we, we, the clarity's there. Okay, let's move on councillor Fernandez.
Thank you. So last week we heard quite extensively from, from a number of people about the cultural heritage landscape, and our staff has done a really great job. I've attended a number of the public open houses, there were lots of people who came in with misconceptions and perception about what this meant. And we've heard again and again from Mr. Ben Sisson, as I've also heard from Ms. Drake, that, that is perception, that this is an inventory and that the next step, the phase two step, is where we're going to be working one-on-one with property owners. And I think that's very critical and very important for everybody to hear that. Staff is not ignoring the process, they're not circumnavigating the process. And I think Mr. Ben Sisson's example of the official plan is a perfect example. Another example I would say would be our crossby, our comprehensive review of our zoning. We did not immediately send out a notification to every single resident, but we're doing that now, that's the next phase. So I think that, that this is a, a great opportunity for us, for us to identify the cultural heritage landscapes. It's not going to make it more challenging for anybody at this time. We have as a council the opportunity to make that decision in the next phase and that we additionally, this will strengthen some of our heritage, not everything, it will strengthen some of it. No, the point was made that we're at the forefront of this issue, and I think that we should be proud of that. I don't know how many times we crow from the rooftops about us being on the forefront of whatever issue it is, whether it's our tech area, whether it's our redevelopment of brownfield sites, whether it's our bike report, we, we proclaim how proud we are. So let's continue proclaiming how proud we are about the work that our heritage planning staff, that our heritage committee did about this wonderful document. There are next steps, baby steps, as both Mr. McInnes indicated he would like us to see, and as Mr. Ben Sisson indicated that we are doing. I'd like to see a recorded vote on this, as additionally, I don't know if councillor Gazola asked for a recorded vote on the proposed new wording. Did he ask for that already?
To be clear, the proposed new wording is, is the motion as it's being dealt with this evening, but I am going to take that third paragraph separately and you can, and we can have a recorded vote on that.
Okay.
So the wording that we're dealing with is the new wording that has the word heritage added in three points, in three areas.
Okay, perfect, I'm glad we understand, thank you.
Councillor Janetzky.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the wording with the, the heritage added, just makes it, clarifies it, makes it simple. As has been pointed out and by my colleagues here, councillor Fernandez and councillor Gazola, in terms of some of the concerns that they've had and how we've moved on forward on this, I totally agree with them as well, and we are moving forward and as, we are in the forefront and we, we should be going there. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to, to do this, from a heritage perspective. And as pointed out by Mr. Ben Sisson, this is just an inventory. It's got no status in terms of a designation here at this point in time, and it's just an inventory of those 55 landscape areas. And, and the notification process that has been undertaken by staff is the proper way of doing it, which is very similar to the zone change and official plan process, so I don't see anything that is out of the ordinary that has been taking place. And now that they're going to go a step further in stage two, to, to make it identified to all property owners who are affected, that's going in the right direction, and I see that as being acceptable. The issue that Mr. Gazola, councillor Gazola brought up about the deferral of taxes for a lot of the properties, for the Westmount property, is, is true, because I've had some dealings with it in Toronto, and they are in the same situation that properties back in the 40s and 50s have deferral taxes and they still exist today. And that is a scenario, I understand, is across Ontario for a lot of golf courses that have maybe taken advantage of, of that particular option. So yes, they've been given a benefit and, and I think that as corporate citizens, they should think twice about it. The issue of the amendment of Mr. Huck that is proposed, that is to be deleted from the cultural heritage, I'm not prepared to support that. The issue pertaining to the Westmount Golf Course as a, notwithstanding the, the wording change, but as a policy as an exception, I am not prepared to support that at all. Mr. Ben Sisson, in terms of his comments earlier, was totally clear that this does not affect any other of the 55 properties, and you were trying to make an exception just to tighten the rules. I think he's just totally wrong. As I said last week, if we're going to do this, then we should apply the same policy to all the other 54 properties and make it, make it the same and equal. But as he has pointed out, it is not going to be affected, and all we're just trying to do is just satisfy Westmount Golf Course. I'm prepared to support the landscape overall, but I'm not prepared to support the deferral to October, nor the Huck property, and nor this particular Westmount Golf Course amendment.
Councillor Etherington.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I don't know how anyone can argue in good conscience against preservation of historic heritage areas for our children and our grandchildren. Just dumbfounds me. There are those on this council and off the council who would do so and try to nibble away and undermine everything we've done to build heritage in this community. And we've still got a long way to go. We met regional and provincial regulations, as I asked earlier, when we invested all the time and effort in documenting, documenting our cultural heritage areas. That's time and expense of consultants, heritage committee members, volunteers, and myself as council member on that, that group. And then that was all approved by this council, all of that cost and process and everything was approved. And I would remind councillors that attendance at those public meetings, as Leon said, was excellent. I'd also remind them that, and Mr. McInnes and Mr. Huck, and some councillors, that heritage preservation is not some type of boogeyman creeping along, ready to gobble up poor property owners. For those reasons, I oppose the amendment from councillor Davy. I oppose the one involving the Huck building, and I most certainly oppose the one from councillor Ionidas' effort to delay the process for six months. Give me a break.
Okay, I just want to be absolutely clear. The third paragraph of number two is not an amendment any longer, it's part of the report that council is considering today. So I just want people to understand that. I'll deal with it separately though, so you can have your opportunity to either vote in favor or against that. Councillor Davy.
Thank you. I have some concerns with a lot of the comments that have been made. I agree 100% with councillor Gazola, the tax issue with Westmount Golf Course is definitely unfavorable. If I could change it, I'd be one of the people that would be happy to have that discussion. My understanding is that we can't. That notwithstanding, one has absolutely nothing to do with the other, it's, they're, apples and oranges. What is, what was concerning to the Westmount Golf and Country Club is they're hearing from staff that we don't, we're not interested in getting involved in the day-to-day operations of the course. So if everyone's saying we're not going to get involved in the day-to-day operations of the course, then why not approve it in writing? What's this, what's the fear? I don't understand this. Do you know how many private golf courses are a cultural heritage landscape in Ontario? Zero, there is not one. So my question that I'm posing to all, to everyone who's deeply concerned about heritage, do you want the first one to be a big fight? Because when Westmount Golf and Country Club first heard of this, they were 100% opposed. And what some people around this horseshoe are saying is a roadblock or a contingency or whatever negative slant they're putting on it, it's a victory. They have waived their right, that all cultural heritage application will, will kick in if they're trying to do anything with that piece of property other than being a golf course. So if we're not going to listen to, when a private person comes up to us and we can work out a plan that everyone's relatively content with, then I do start to ask the questions. Well, if they're not going to agree to it in writing, or if they're not going to put their, their money where their mouth is and say we're not going to interfere in your day-to-day, day-to-day operations, then I start to fear that maybe the plan is they want to interfere in the day-to-day operations. This is a victory, and I would encourage everyone to support it.
Councillor Schneider.
Councillor Davy just basically said everything I wanted to say. I think the, the tax issue is separate from the heritage issue, and the agreement that councillor Davy was able to mediate between Westmount and the city, I think was voted on at the last council meeting and approved, so I don't think there's any changes that need be made to it.
Okay, so that appears that all the comments have been made, I'll make my own. Oh, so go ahead councillor Ionidas, you weren't clicked in until now?
I thought I was. So one of the, one of the arguments that I heard was that there won't be any implications. And when I hear that, I go, that's great, if there's not going to be no implications, then what's the hurry? Why, why are we rushing in this process? I know perception has, has been thrown around here, and I, I think perception has a huge negative impact, and that's why I think, why should we hurry? Let's, let's, let's get the facts straight, let's, let's get the public engagement that we need and so that we don't have this false perception. Because if there's this false perception, that means we're not actually talking to our residents. So if they're not understanding it, that's because we're not actually telling it. So in, in, in my two years of campaigning, I never once heard anyone at the door say heritage was an important aspect, not once. I honestly, I don't understand why we're in the forefront here. I don't, I don't even recall this being in, in veronics. In fact, what I recall of what's in veronics is being transparent and having, being, having engagement tools for our residents. That's what I recall. Having our residents be informed. So I think everyone around this horseshoe has tooted their horn that, saying that they support community engagement. Well, here it is, but we, we haven't really communicated with, with our community about this. I don't think there has been a proper public engagement for this. And I don't want to wait for the last minute to get public engagement, because that's what we've been hearing around here, why would we wait at the last minute for public engagement? I want to be in the forefront, let's, let's get right to the conversation right from the beginning. We have some opposition here. We had some opposition earlier about sidewalks, we listened to them with no problem, but we have opposition here with property owners that have some concerns and we're ignoring them. I think that's wrong. So, you know, I'm not here to give you a break councillor Etherington, I'm here to give break to our residents. So I think we need to do what's right, I think we need to have proper public engagement, and that's why I think we should support the deferral. Again, no implications, it's just a list, so what's the difference if we wait till October? No big deal, no difference.
Just briefly, I would never, ever, ever ask for anything from councillor Ionidas.
Okay, gentlemen, it's getting late, let's all just do what we need to do and play nice. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
I just want to remind council that we all had a session when this new council came in, and we all vowed that we would be respectful around the horseshoe, and I just wish that that would continue to be the approach that we take. Having said that, I seconded the deferral, just to get it on the floor, I think when someone puts something forward and is passionate about it, we should at least have the opportunity to vote on it. I will not support the deferral. I understand from the committee meeting and from the reading that I've done and everything that I've heard with this respect, that I think the, the difficulty is, is with the approach. And while the approach is good, it's phase one, and phase one doesn't kick anything into place that's going to have a negative impact on property owners as of right now. We'll take that opportunity to dialogue with the residents that, in the affected areas, and then we'll have that opportunity to come back and have those discussions when, which could fill the chambers with people who may not want to be part of, of the landscape. But that, that will be the opportunity and the place to do it. And so I think it's really just about the approach, the timing, and I think understanding that, that it's an inventory and it's going to have no negative implications, I'm able to support it at this time. And as for the Westmount Golf Course, that's an easy one. You have staff on the same page as the board and owners of the golf course, and everyone's on the same page, and, and I agree with, with councillor Davy. I think that that's a victory, that we're going to be able to say that we have a golf course that's one of our cultural heritage landscapes that relatively went smoothly.
Councillor Singh.
Yeah, very quickly, and I have always advocated for the interests of landowners. And I think this is an early process, a citywide review in identifying more important cultural heritage landscapes that will have extensive involvement with those neighborhoods, where there will be opportunity for public engagement at that point. And I hope staff have taken from the comments that have been heard around the table today, that that aspect of engagement needs to be extensive when that time comes, when that, those properties are being looked at. But for now, I think this is, this is a good process, and I look, look forward to engage and take part in that discussion. So I will support the, the motion as well as the, the last paragraph that councillor Davy has helped to bring forward as a good compromise. I think this has already been said, that the, the organization, the Westmount Golf Course, the club, they've, have been good stewards in maintaining their property in immaculate, in, in a, in a, just the way it's been kept over this decade, I meant to say century, sorry, century, last century, is, is considerable, that they, we should give them confidence that they will continue to do so, and we shouldn't provide hindrance in their day-to-day operations. So it's easy to see why that, that this motion needs to be supported as well.
Okay, if I can make my comments now, I will be supporting the recommendation that came out of committee as well as, and I, and I won't be supporting the, the deferral. I wasn't at committee when this was dealt with, but I've read through the minutes, I've listened to all of the discussion and debate this evening, and also heard from the delegations who are here, and I appreciate them coming in this evening and sharing their concerns. For me, it really boils down to two issues. First of all, we've dealt with this situation consistent with how we would handle other citywide planning initiatives. If we had handled it in a, in a different way, I would potentially be dealing with this differently tonight. But we were consistent in terms of how we communicated that we were dealing with these issues, and we provided opportunities for people to, to have some input, and we heard that there have been people in attendance who participated in the process, up to and including this evening. Having, having said that, I will also acknowledge though, the comment made by councillor Ionidas that I, I do think, and this just, this applies to, to many things that we're doing, we need to find better ways of engaging people, and that's one of the things that I'm, I'm looking towards our engagement tools that we approved in the budget this year to help us do that, where people can self-identify to be on a, on a mailing list for, for topics of interest to them. They will automatically get that information sent to them, and in the future will be able to, to attend and participate on any of those issues when, when they come up at council. In terms of supporting the recommendation that's before us, I do so because all that it's doing is prioritizing areas of interest to us as, as a community, and, and prioritizing the efforts of staff in terms of what they're going to look at going forward. If tonight this was all of a sudden going to put these properties onto a heritage record. this was all of a sudden going to put these properties onto a heritage register, which does have impacts, I wouldn't be, I would have much more concerns in terms of where we were going with this. But this is simply beginning the dialogue, and there'll be many opportunities for us to work with affected property owners, including the delegations that came in this evening, to address any concerns before council deals with placing them potentially, or not, on a heritage register. And so, because this is merely a prioritization of staff resources and identifying areas of interest to the community as a whole, I will support the recommendation. So with that, the first motion we'll deal with, then, is the motion to defer, and a recorded vote has been requested. So, Mr. Clerk, or Madam Clerk, whoever is controlling that, you can vote now, please, on the deferral only. Oh, sorry. All those in favor, opposed. The motion does not carry. We'll now deal with the first two paragraphs of the recommendation. Recorded vote? The first two paragraphs of recommendation two. So not the one about the golf club. We'll come to that in a second. That's carried unanimously. And now we'll come to the final paragraph, which is the one with respect to the golf club, with the wording as shown this evening. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that carries. So if we can, folks, that, we've dealt now with PSI number two. I'm going to ask that we just right away deal with the Heritage Kitchener report. Who's bringing that forward? Counsel Yonetski?
Just want to make note that there's still a delegation waiting.
I realize there is a delegation. I'm just going to very quickly deal with this. And then we're going to go to that delegation on that issue. I'm just trying to get the heritage stuff dealt with. Counsel Yonetski?
Thank you. Heritage Community recommends that pursuant to Section 27 of the Heritage Act, the following properties, and there's 25 of them approximately, be listed on the Heritage Register. Each is a non-designated property of cultural heritage value or interest in accordance with their respective statement of significance, as outlined in the appendix saved the Community Services Report, CDS 15035. And I'm not going to list the 25.
That's fine. Who's seconding that? Counsel Gazola. Counsel Gazola, okay. So it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Sorry. Go ahead, Counsel Ionitis.
It's regarding with 255 Fisher-Halman Road. I want to ask staff if there was any response from the school board on that.
Mr. Pensozol?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the notes in terms of the responses that we did receive, and we did not receive a response from the board.
Okay. So all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll now move on to delegations with respect to B1 sub 2 in the tenders. But before we do that, I would turn it to Mr. Chapman to introduce somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've noticed that there's a new face around the staff horseshoe this evening. I'd like to take a moment to introduce you to Michelle Palmer Novakovic, who was appointed as Larry Gordon's successor to the role of Director of Supply Services a week ago today. Given you'll see her now at future council meetings, I'd like to provide a brief background. Michelle has 20 years of substantial procurement experience, and she may be familiar to some of you because she, in fact, worked in our Supply Services Division from 2007 to 2011. Since leaving the city, she was employed in progressively responsible positions. First, as Senior Manager of Contract Management and Relationships with the Waterloo Wellington CCAC, and after that Supervisor and Acting Manager of Procurement with the Region of Waterloo. Prior to her time in the public sector, she had about a decade of experience in manufacturing environments. In addition to her formal education, she holds a number of designations in the field, and also has provided leadership to the sector as Chair of the Cooperative Purchasing Group of Waterloo Region, and is presently the Vice President of the Ontario Public Buyers Association. I had the privilege of knowing Michelle from 2007 to 2011, and I think it's fair to say that you will come to be impressed by her high degree of personal integrity, and also her commitment to service, which I think will serve the city well for many years to come. So please join me in welcoming Michelle back to the City of Kitchener.
Welcome back, Michelle. So we'll start, we have two delegations for B1 sub 2, which is the Union Street Reconstruction. Levi Okey. Oh, okay. Levi Okey's our first one. Welcome, Levi.
I'm fairly new to this, but I'll be very quick, because it's already quite late. It's interesting, Sarah, when you were, Mrs. Counselor Marsh, you were talking earlier regarding the Simeon Street sidewalk, in terms of communities not being able to create a force, when this bit of work done on Union Street has not had that sort of support, I guess, from the community, or people to back it up, or support it, or not support it. As you may know, there is currently in the works, I believe, by the Cycling Advisory Committee and others to do some work on Union Street, on what's considered the east side of Union Street. We also saw that this was coming up. So this is the west side of Union Street, heading towards Sarita Avenue, and eventually to Arnold. There's some work on bike lanes being completed there, as well as sidewalks. And I'm going to, again, keep it very short. I'm very supportive of this. As someone who often goes to Hacienda, Syria, which is just at the end of there, this will be hugely advantageous for me and my three kids. Having sidewalks on that road right now, we're walking right on the road. So it's fantastic that you guys are getting this work done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, Levi. Any questions for Levi? No? Okay. Thank you. And our next delegation is Mike Bose. Did you have a question for the last delegation, or no?
I have a question.
Okay. That's fine. Mr. Bose, welcome again. And thanks to both of you for your patience this evening.
Thanks again for having me. I just wanted to come here and give credit where it's due. I know very often that council hears a lot of complaints, a lot of changes that are happening that aren't wanted. And I think that we need to celebrate the opportunities when the city is getting things right. And in this case, a few years ago, the city created the Cycling Master Plan, and in that plan, we designated certain streets as being part of the cycling network that we wanted to build, and said that as we rebuild these streets, we will put cycling infrastructure on them. And that has been the case here, and it's happened as such a matter of routine, actually. As a member of the Cycling and Trails Advisory Committee, I was unaware until a few days ago that this was actually happening. So kudos to the city, to the staff, to making cycling a priority in our city. Also, on the matter of sidewalks, I think it's great to see them coming. As I bike on Lancaster every day, I see at the Lancaster and Union bus stop, a lot of people using transit from that area. And so improving the walkability of the area improves transit access and improves the quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Counsel Gazola, you had a question of staff? If you can click in, please.
If staff could just explain, we received a change in the expenditures or budgets for it. There's a big $415,000 difference. What is the story behind that?
Mr. Allen?
There's an additional source of funding found there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's actually two parts to this project. There's the reconstruction that you're familiar with under the AIRP. There is also a water main-only component on Sarita Avenue. When the financial report was prepared for the package, the funding from Kitchener Utilities for that water main-only portion was omitted in error. So the correction is just to reinsert that.
Okay. So it was there. We just failed to pick it up. So there's really no change then. Yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Marsh?
I just want to mention that this project had two PICs, as is the usual requirement. The second one, the last one, was last Thursday. A lot of the residents in this area did, in fact, come, and they, right out of the gate, they were upset that they hadn't been notified with enough notice. They had been notified within less than a week of the meeting, and a lot of them did show up anyway. And so I was able to go with the staff, who is, sorry, the consultant who is in charge of overseeing this project from Conestoga Rovers. We went and we looked at how we might mitigate some of the concerns of the residents that night. We were there till 10 o'clock at night. And then yesterday, I was able to reach nine different households, spending a few hours on that street. And I'm confident that we can address the concerns of the residents. Some of them are really quite happy that we're having a sidewalk put in and a bike lane. Others are very concerned about it. But yeah, I just want to mention that I'm confident that we can go forward and mitigate any concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Fernandez?
Are we going to ask questions of tenders now? Is that what your intention is?
We're asking questions of...
Just this one?
This one, right now.
Okay. I don't have any questions of this one. I have one of the...
Okay. So I'm going to take the vote on this one, since we have a delegation here for it. All those in favor? Okay, it hasn't been moved. Thank you. Counsel Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counsel Schneider. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We'll now deal with the balance of the tenders. Thank you, gentlemen, and Mr. Allen. They've all been moved by Counsel Galloway-Seelock, seconded, Counseler Ionitis, Counseler Gazola. Questions?
I have a question, not on the first one. I have a question on the banking one.
Okay, go ahead.
Who are our bankers now?
Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. CIBC is the incumbent. Prior to that, it was Bank of Montreal.
I noticed we didn't get a quote. Did we ask the Bank of Montreal to quote, or...?
I can't comment on who it was sent out to. I don't know if Ms. Palmer-Novakovic has that information. But certainly, it was advertised broadly and publicly, so any bidder would have had the ability to pick up the RFP document.
The, fine. The bottom line states that we're even getting a better deal than we have now? Is that correct?
That's correct, and I would draw your attention to the fact that in the first part of the recommendation, essentially, the city, through this RFP, will be paying basically nothing for our extensive banking services.
Thank you.
Counsel Fernandez?
Yes, thanks. I have a few concerns about the cost of the consultant services for the Old Mill Sanitary Sewer. And I did email Mr. Gross, and although he did give me a response, I still am concerned. When, a few years back, we did some work, I know it was a little bit different, but we used MTE at the time, and Chris, Mr. Spear, was the consultant on that job and did a wonderful job. People were always complimenting him. He is now one of our staff members, which I think is great. And that was why I was asking, why are we spending so much money when we have a staff member who's very familiar with the workings of that area, familiar with a number of criteria? I think that this, we're looking at close to a quarter million dollars just for consulting services. That, I believe, isn't even a shovel in the ground. That's a significant dollar, and right at this moment, I'm not prepared to support that.
Okay. I'll come to you, and we'll deal with that one separately. Sorry, Mr. Taggy, did you want to comment on that?
Your worship, Mr. Mayor, through you, the environmental assessment is a very specialized area. And we engage consultants only on two occasions. Number one, if we don't have the internal capacity. So we may have the expertise, but now staff is busy with the other projects, and we don't have the capacity for them to work on the project. That will be one area where we'll engage a consultant. The second would be that we need specialized capacity from outside consultants to work on a project.
Okay. Counsel...
I just wanted to respond to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. And I completely understand that, Mr. Taggy. But I guess what I need to understand is, when is this work planned to be done? I mean, we're going, how long do you anticipate this EA to take? And when exactly are we anticipating to do the actual work around the pumping station?
The answer, and Mr. Gross is here, he can probably complete the answer. The work will be done in 2015, but perhaps Mr. Gross can answer the question with respect to how long it will take.
Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The environmental assessment will typically take approximately six to nine months to complete. Immediately following that, we would be into the construction phase, assuming that the environmental assessment has been approved and passed, and passed a 30-day review period. It's one of the projects that's very important to us, simply because we've had two spills in the past. The pumping station is very close to the creek. As I indicated, there were two previous spills. We don't want that to happen again.
Okay. So you've already identified this is a very important project. So according to council policy, the Ward Counselor should be involved in a project of significance like something like this. How come I haven't been asked to sit on the steering committee or the project team for something like this as yet?
Through the chair, the environmental assessment is not considered a very complex one. We are certainly, and there is no steering committee, it's a project team, that makes up the project lead. We will certainly be willing to, and will, in any event, keep the Ward Counselor informed of all progress and of all decisions as we go along. That's not an issue at all.
Well, I, you know what, in all due respect to Mr. Gross, you've just identified that this is a very important project, that we've had two spills already. I have spoken with Ms. Cooper, who has identified a number of concerns about the location of where this work is going to go. It is right in the Grand River floodplain. It has a number of dramatic impacts on the residents who are immediately adjacent to this. And so with all due respect, I would like to be on that project team.
Okay. Well, that's...
And I know what that'll take, but that's what I'd like.
Well, I think that's a conversation that you can have outside of this. I will say one thing on tenders. Over the last while, and it started last term, we've moved away from what our role is as an approving body around tenders, which is to approve the tenders and make sure that they're following our purchasing policy. More and more, the discussion and the line of questioning at tender debate is becoming about people's views on the project, questions about the project, and so on. And this isn't the place for that. If people want to have discussions around that, I think we need to have those at committee. You can have them offline, whatever is appropriate. But we shouldn't, we should be strictly dealing with process here, from a purchasing perspective. So I'm just, I'm going to start becoming a little tougher in terms of what's okay and what's not okay on the questions around this stuff from a governance point of view.
Well, then, maybe we should have a preamble at committee about some of these tenders, then, instead of having it come directly to council.
Well, that's a debate and a conversation we can have, if that's something that council wants to do. Counsel Yonetski?
Yeah, on the first item, the Old Mill, there's, I mean, this consulting fee is about a quarter of a million, which is... about a quarter of a million, which was pointed out. The whole project of all the phases is about seven and a half million. How many phases are there, and is the majority of the money for the actual construction of the pumping station, is that, or is there other ways it's going to be divvied up?
Through the, through Mr. Mayor, the total project is approximately 7.5. There are two phases, well, three. There's the environmental assessment, there's the design phase, and then there's the construction phase.
Okay, so the design phase, that's also something that we'll be going through another tender then?
The design phase follows immediately after the environmental assessment. The environmental assessment typically includes approximately a 20% to 25% preliminary design component. Then the design phase includes all of the total design, ready for construction, including all of the approvals necessary.
Okay, gotcha. Perfect, thank you. The next question I have is in regard to the banking services, the item number three. I'm trying to understand, there were ten interested parties, three proposals submitted, of which the CIBC was one of them, and then the other two was RBC and TD Bank Commercial. Yet when I look at the recommendation, we have Global Payments Canada, then we've got US Bank National Association, and they're not even one of those who have submitted a proposal. I don't know how this all works and fits in together. Help me out. Ms. Palmer-Novakovic?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The CIBC and each of the proponents were able to put through a strategic partner for each of the sections or components of the proposal. So in this one, there was the banking services, the merchant services, and the purchasing card services. So you'll notice the three listed, CIBC, RBC, and TD. Each of them proposed a strategic partner for each of the sections.
Okay, so they're working with partnership then? Okay, thank you. Counsel Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment quickly, because we talked about the tenders and when we have our say. Our say comes at budget time, because all of these are in the budget for this year, and that's where we can hammer out whether they should be done and the details, and if not, then it should be done offline. I agree, our tenders are taking too long. From my perspective, the first time I brought Tyson to the meeting, I went back and I fed him for over half an hour, and we were still dealing on tenders. And I think that's just one indicator. There's certain questions that need to be asked, but we need to stay within the realm of what our job is in governance over the process of procurement.
Thank you. Counsel Fernandez, you had another question?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, you were clicked in. Okay, so the, gathered, number one, sub-one, has been asked to be dealt with separately. So all those in favor of the old mill road tender? Opposed? One opposed, that's carried. The balance of the tenders, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, thank you very much. You survived your first tender session. We'll now move on to reports of the committees, and the first one would be Counsel Ionitis.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Atherton that the report of the Community Infrastructure Service Committee be adopted through items one, two, eight.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Davey on this issue?
Yeah, I'd just like to vote. I wasn't able to make it to committee, but I'd like to vote on items number four and seven separately. They can be voted on together if you like, but I'd also like a recorded vote, please.
Okay. Any further discussion on those? I will just add on those issues. I too, I presume that, Counsel Davey didn't make any comments, I do have some concerns potentially around, around the nature of the event and how that will potentially impact the community, but I think the language that's been put in here makes it very clear in terms of what our bylaw enforcement staff will and will not accept, and what the implications of that will be, and so I'm happy to see that worded accordingly. And at the end of the day, will that, will potentially impact how we deal with that event in the future. Counsel Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly comment on that. When we dealt with this in committee, all the organizers were present and were very prompt in answering any of the questions we have. I think we're working with, partnering with a group of people who will abide by the regulations that we're putting in place and will address any concerns on the day of the event, or sorry, the days of the event.
No, and thanks for commenting on that, because I have heard certainly that spirit of goodwill as well, so hopefully that'll play out on concert days. So with that, all those in favor? Sorry, except for those two, except, we'll deal with everything except four and seven. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And you asked for four and seven to be a recorded vote? Okay. So we'll deal with them together, four and seven? Yes?
If Counsel Davey has a comment about these four and seven, I wonder, I would invite, you know, that.
He doesn't have to comment. He can just ask for, yep. Okay, so we'll do a recorded vote on four and seven together. Yep. Opposed? One opposed, that's carried. We'll now move on then to the balance of PSI. Counselor Singh?
Yes, that's just item one, that the consideration for that item be deferred to the May 25th. Planning and strategic initiatives, council meeting.
And seconded by?
Counsel Galloway-Seelock.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, that too is carried. Moving on to unfinished business, the Aeronautical Noise Management Committee. Counsel Schneider?
Yes, because we brought this issue up to council, and we got some great media coverage, we have 29 applicants now for the Aeronautical Noise Management Committee, so I would like to move a motion. We have three positions to fill, but the motion is that notwithstanding the terms of reference for the nominating committee, the applications received for the City of Kitchener Citizen Volunteer Representatives on the Aeronautical Noise Management Committee for the 2014-18 term be referred for review by the nominating committee with a recommendation to be provided to the June 1st, 2015 council meeting.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Singh. Any discussion?
No, because this is under unfinished business.
All those in favor? Opposed, that too is carried. Moving under new business. Any new business? Very quickly, on, under the regional council update, it's regional and municipal council. I think everyone's aware that we had the provincial and federal budgets last week. There were, the budgets included some things, certainly four municipalities on the federal and permanent transportation infrastructure fund that kicks in over a number of years, starting in 2017, if I remember correctly. As well, one of the, one of the interesting ones, and this is something that staff may want to take a look at in terms of the 150th Birthday of Canada celebration, there was indication that there would be an infrastructure fund for special projects commemorating that, although there was no definition of quantum or how people would apply for that, but it's something we should probably pay attention to. On the provincial budget end of things, I think probably the main point there is that there were no changes with respect to the GO transit plan, which is over a 10-year period up to 2014, with the next two lines happening in 2016. There's obviously some more advocacy work, I think, that we need to continue doing on that front. And I also want to thank Counsel Davey for representing me at a meeting with Premier Wynn and the other Lumco mayors last week when I was on the CTT mission. I think it was an opportunity, I don't know, Counsel Davey, if you want to touch on any of the issues that were covered off, or... Jack, go ahead.
Certainly, there wasn't any major announcements, obviously, and a couple areas that were relevant to the City of Kitchener was with respect to economic development. The premier made mention of tighter ties directly with, with the province in terms of letting them know if there is any major development changes with respect to items like Maple Leaf or issues like that, so I thought that was welcoming. I did actually have a question, though, I'm not sure if you're going to make comments about the federal budget or not.
About the which?
Yeah, about the federal budget. I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, my only question was, I'm just wondering if you've heard any clarification, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the transportation dollars that are allocated. The federal government has indicated large urban cities, and I'm not sure whether that means, or if you have an idea whether that includes, that would include the region or the City of Kitchener?
So the, it is transit infrastructure, so it would be regional focused. We're still, I think, working to attain clarification as to what large means. We believe it to mean large, higher-order transit, so that would include things like a future phase of LRT potentially. It would include things potentially like a federal share of GO transit, we believe. But again, all of that is, are things that the federal government has indicated they would engage with FCM in conversation with Canadian citizens in the weeks ahead.
In the weeks ahead?
Yeah, weeks slash months ahead.
Okay, thank you.
On that, or is it on another issue? On that? Oh, on something else? Counsel Atherton was yours on the budget, or on my report? Okay, then I'll come to you shortly. So Counsel Fernandez, okay, we'll actually move on to questions and answers. Counsel Fernandez?
Yes, thank you. So tonight, we heard a number of times about presentations and public engagement with the public. It seems that we have a real wide range between how it's done in different departments. Transportation does it one way, planning does it another way, we heard earlier today, engineering does it another way. So what I really would like to ask is if we could take a look at a standard process on how we do public information sessions. The transportation department does a remarkable job. They have boards that are put on streets that people can see. They have notifications that go out, issues that are on the website, and I hear time and time again about what a wonderful job that that department does in notifying people about public meetings. I understand that the planning department must follow certain guidelines, but I think overall, I'd like to really understand if we could have a more consistent way that we deal with our public information sessions. I think that that is really important in the whole overall scheme of public engagement. So I guess I'm asking for a report from staff, if possible, to see what that would look like and how we could do that.
I'll turn to Mr. Wilmer on this, but I do know that we already have citizen engagement policy and more work being done on that going forward, or I guess the citizen engagement policy in the works, I guess.
So through the mayor, this aspect of how we approach public meetings and engagement on projects is in fact a project in the business plan, so there will be a report coming back to council on the matter.
Okay, I guess I wasn't thinking that it was the same kind of, same kind of projects, but so specifically, it will be addressing how we do public information sessions consistent across all departments every single time we come out, go out to the public?
In part, yes. This is in response to the issue raised by council expressing concern about inconsistency. I won't guarantee that we, the outcome of that is guaranteeing a consistent approach, but we will bring a report to council, and you can make decisions on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for reminding me that that's in the works as well. Additionally, I guess my second question was around my issue with the EA, and I don't know whether that's something I need, because, Mr. Mayor, you said it was something I needed to ask for the will of council. My understanding was that it was something that was part of our building, or sorry, part of our council policy related to environmental assessments. Is it something you'd like me to speak with, Mr. Tagg, about?
I would suggest that you have a conversation offline with staff about it, and if it needs further direction from council, then we can deal with that at a future meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And it's looking like we're probably going to go a couple minutes past 11, so I'm going to need a quick motion to go past 11, and we'll need unanimous consent. Counselor Fernandez, sorry, it's late, seconded by Counsel Ionitis. Well, hopefully not much longer. That's not up to me. We need unanimous consent to go past 11. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Counsel Atherton, you're next.
A triple-decker question, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
Triple-decker question.
Triple-decker.
Yeah, but it can get fast answers, I'm sure. Could someone give me an update, staff give me an update on when the May fair will be demolished? Why hasn't that issue gone before Heritage Committee? And I believe it is on the agenda for May 5th, in which case I wonder if it's possible to delay demolition until that discussion does take place. So it's three questions.
We'll get you the question answered, but I'm just going to be cautious that we don't start straying into the, into an attempt to revisit a decision that's already been made by council. Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe as Mike Sealing indicated to you, that the developer, or the building owner is in the process of obtaining demolition quotes. When a quote is selected, the engineer for that demolition contractor will submit the engineered demolition plan, and on that basis, they can issue the permit. My understanding is that the building owner is working through that process as we speak. You were informed last Thursday around the process with respect to the withdrawal of a notice to, a notice of intent to designate the building. That is a council process and does not involve or require Heritage Kitchener input. And lastly, my understanding is that Mr. Sealing was unequivocal in his comments to council in that there is no ability to delay. The building needs to be demolished as soon as is practical, given the risk to public safety.
Thank you. Counsel Atherton? Is that your triple parter?
Yep.
Oh, okay. No other questions and answers? Okay, we'll then take, first, it's been moved by Counsel Schneider, seconded by Counsel Gazola, that leave be given, the move and seconded to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole. Understand there are no additional bylaws, so all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counsel Galloway, the council resolved itself, excuse me, into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counsel Galloway-Seelock, sorry, I referred to you as just Galloway before. I caught it, though. Go ahead.
I was going to say, let the record be known.
I know, I was going to get in trouble.
It happens occasionally, that's all right. I'll probably still call you Counsel Verbanovic sometimes, too.
That's okay. Triche.
Okay, so committee of the whole, can I get someone to move the bylaws for a second reading? Moved by Counsel Ionitis, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It could have been a really short committee of the whole, but we do have a motion that Mayor Verbanovic's planning on bringing forward with regards to Nepal, so in order to do that, we do need to waive notice of motion, so we need two-thirds of that to waive. Moved by Counsel Singh. Everyone's clear with which you're waiving notice of motion for the Nepal motion? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. I believe it was unanimous. Mayor Verbanovic?
So I had sent an email out to council earlier this afternoon with respect to the earthquake in Nepal and the significant human and capital destruction that happened there. There's been a lot that's taken place during the day, even since I sent out that notion, or that email with proposed motion. The province of Ontario has...
The province of Ontario has, uh, committed one million dollars towards, um, recovery and efforts. The federal government has contributed five million, the DART team, and are matching donations from citizens over the next, uh, over the next month. And FCM will be communicating with member municipalities, uh, tomorrow, uh, and are advising that, uh, any contributions, because they've been having lots of requests today, would go to the Canadian Red Cross Nepal Region Earthquake Fund. And so, um, based on our past practice of dealing with either the ice storm, the tsunami in Southeast Asia, as well as the earthquakes in Kashmir, Haiti, and Philippines, generally our, our contribution has been five thousand, except for the Philippines one, when Counselor Gazola suggested ten thousand because of our, um, historic connection with, uh, Cebu. Uh, the motion that I'm bringing forward is that five thousand be donated to the Canadian Red Cross Nepal Region Earthquake Fund, uh, for earthquake disaster relief efforts in Nepal to aid in the provision of immediate relief and basic assistance to the thousands of people affected by this natural disaster.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions?
Counselor Singh is in the queue.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Does no, yes, so, committee of the whole doesn't need a second. I'll just quickly say that I think this speaks to the, the giving and the, the barnasing nature of this community, and would be fitting, and, uh, definitely go a long way to helping those in desperate need right now.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, where, where is the money going?
To the Canadian Red Cross Nepal Region, what did I say? Nepal Region Earthquake Fund.
Yeah, no, so is it going to the FCM first, who are going?
No, no, directly to the Canadian Red Cross.
Okay, there's no further questions. Uh, it's been moved, all in favor? Opposed? It's not unanimous. With that, uh, that's all of the committee of the whole, so, uh, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Davy, that the proceedings, the recorded pecuniary interests and conflict taken in the meetings of the committee of the whole, held this data as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, it's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, finally passed and numbered serially by the clerk, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and it's been moved by Counselor Etherington, that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And actually, we got done before eleven, so that's pretty good. Good job, everyone. Out.